Okay. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, October 28th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kaiser, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Nanki, Counselor Leung, Counselor Osik, Counselor Hoy, Counselor Lewis, and Mayor Bennett.
Here. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to begin this meeting completing the appointment to the City Council Ward Seven vacancy. Ms. City Attorney, you want to kind of take us through what we're up to? Take your chances on getting it right.
Sure.[64.01][64.01](Laughter). So I think after the special session on the 21st, the City Attorney's Office realized there had been an error in the tabulation and in the call made regarding the vote. So the Charter does require that there be a majority of counselors that vote for the new counselor. So that means there must be five votes. And we also allowed a write-in, and that is not allowed by the rules. And so you have before you some new ballots. There are four in case they are needed. So you'll need to vote for one of the two listed candidates. You must vote. You cannot abstain from voting. And as you did on the 21st, I'll give you an opportunity to vote. Please sign your ballot. Please vote. There should be a vote or a ballot that says ballot number one or first ballot and so on if we need to continue voting. I'll collect the ballots and tally them. And then, once we receive five votes for one individual, I'll declare the winner. Any questions? Yes?
Well, I think it's good enough except for one small thing. In the ballot last time, I don't see any place where it said that you could write in somebody's name.
So I'm not sure that it did specifically state that it did, but I think we need to -- wanted to just clarify that you cannot write in any other individuals' names.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay.
So for the vote number one, we have five votes and two votes, and so therefore we have a winner, Vanessa Nordike.
That's not correct. You're missing one.
Thank you. And I apologize. I may have just missed a check on my part. So I only have two. I apologize. So by a vote of six to two, Vanessa Nordike.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, do we swear Vanessa in again, or can we just go ahead with our previous?
Mayor, if I may. I'd like to do a formal swearing-in ceremony another time.
Okay. You don't want to be sworn in -- you don't want to vote tonight?
I would like to be able to vote tonight, but I'd like to do a ceremony so that my family and friends can be present another time.
Absolutely. I think that's -- we'll do that anyway. I just wondered if, for her to vote, do we need to do anything? She's already sworn in once.
Yes. So the swearing-in was not effective the first time, so we do need to do a swearing-in.
But we'll do the formal. Okay? So would you mind? We'll try it again. We're going to keep trying until we get this right, Vanessa.
And I apologize for miscalculating the vote. I apologize. I had one envelope I didn't open. So can you raise your right hand, please? And I state, I, Vanessa Nordike.
I, Vanessa Nordike.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And the City Charter.
And the City Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Salem.
And ordinances of the City of Salem.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully and lawfully.
Faithfully and lawfully.
Perform the duties of City Counselor for Salem during my continuance therein.
Perform the duties of City Counselor for the continuance of something therein?
And I apologize, that was too long. Perform the duties of City Counselor for Salem.
Perform the duties of City Counselor for Salem.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Thank you.[450.12][450.12](Applause).
Well, Counselor Nordike, thank you very much for your patience during all of this. Really appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Good. Additions or deletions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move additions, or revisions, actually, to the agenda.
Second by Kaiser. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Okay. Counselor and City Manager comments. Counselors, anyone got a comment? Counselor?
I actually have three. And the first one is that I left my notebook with all my notes and questions for --
Excellent.
Yes, I know. So you all should thank me. Either I'll be less focused or I'll have less questions. The other thing, there's two other items, and one of them is something I discussed with the City Attorney earlier today. And it relates to the appointment of counselors in this type of situation. I think the council ought to revisit and see if we want to have any kind of policy where we appoint a caretaker or someone who agrees to not run for the position at the next actual election. You know, because in one sense, whichever person we vote for is kind of -- we're kind of giving them a pseudo incumbency, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. But it seems to me it might be better if the council wants to look at this and say, we would appoint somebody who's not running. And I think we did that with Bruce Rogers, who, when he was appointed to fill Counselor Hoy's seat, he said that, "I'm not going to run." And that does make some sense in terms of what we do. And I'm happy with the way things turned out here, but it seems to me I would hope maybe the City Manager and staff could take a look at that and see if there is some sort of council resolution we want to do with that.
Well, we'll have that, we'll take that up at the Council Rules Committee and see if there's something we want to do.
Yeah. And Counselor Nanki just indicated he might like that, too.
The Charter also states that there are many four persons.
Yeah. The final announcement is that there has been another traffic death in Salem. And I had the gentleman's name, but he was riding a bicycle late last week and was injured and has unfortunately died. I think his name was Kevin, and I can't remember his last name. But once again, this happened to be a bicyclist, and I think we've had other bicyclist deaths, but mostly it's pedestrian. And as I say all the time, once or twice is an accident. But we're up to 15, 16, or 17 deaths in my time in the council, and that's more of a systemic thing. And I think we ought to really keep this in mind, and I'm especially thinking of it in the McGillcrest work we're doing on that. That's a bad street. It's a busy street. And it's one thing to have a line on the street that separates bikes. And I know this, now I'm thinking, this, I think, was on Portland Road, and the issue was, did the bicyclist swerve out into the car lane, or did the car swerve into the bicycle lane? Or the driver of the car swerve into the bike lane? And it seems to me on these major arterial streets or collector streets, it would be good for us to have some sort of separation between the bike paths and the car paths. If only it could be those, you know, poles that we see sometimes, or even a raised curve or something. And I would ask that, and I've discussed this before with McGillcrest, but I would ask that we look at that quite seriously, because, you know, a pedestrian or bike with a car, no matter who's at fault, that's not a good outcome for the pedestrian or the car. I also note there was a mother and her young child who were hit, too, crossing, I think it's on Lancaster Boulevard. So I would urge the council and the staff to be very cognizant of bicyclists and pedestrians. And I would especially urge the citizens who are out there to obey the speed limit, to look around and see what their surroundings are before they make some rash decision.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lewis?
I agree almost completely with Counselor Anderson. He has brought up this issue of death on our highways numerous times over the last four years. And each time, I've always come to the same thought. So rather than just keep it to myself, I'm going to voice it. In 1968, when I was a senior in high school, one of our teachers was driving east on I-84, about 20 miles east of Portland at the Corbett exit. Someone walked out to cross the highway, and the teacher hit him and killed him. The teacher was unable, after that, to go back to work. He had been devastated by what happened. What made it worst, worst? No. What made it worse is that the teacher was a Jesuit priest. And for those that don't know Catholicism as well as I do, Jesuits are a certain order of the Catholic Church. They give up everything they own and vow to a life of teaching. And this is an example, although 50 years ago, I believe it's an example that happens in Salem today. I don't think anybody gets up for the purpose of hitting someone. And there are two sides to it. And that pain and suffering of a driver that, through no fault of their own, hits and kills someone, that pain and suffering will stay with them for the rest of their life. And I just think it's important to tell that side of this issue finally.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge that on the 26th, you and I attended the Make a Difference Day out at Lansing, and also the City Manager. We attended the Make a Difference Day in honor of Virginia Barker and three young women who died as a result of a drunk-driving crash. And it was quite a moving turnout, lots and lots of people there. I didn't, I don't know how many, probably 75 people. And it was just a really nice day with tree plantings, four trees in the park for those individuals. Virginia was a longtime neighborhood advocate. She was a member of our Budget Committee, and it was, I was quite honored to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind all our audiences who are watching us today and who are here today that Halloween is this week. And to follow Halloween safety practices, I mean, it's, they're available on the City webpage, but also making sure that people are mindful, especially if they're out trick-or-treating with their children, to keep them close, make sure they're not wearing black, or if they are wearing black for whatever reason, make sure they have a lot of lights that reflect off of them. If they wear masks, try and make sure it doesn't cover their vision. I mean, there's a few other things that were listed, I believe, on the City of Salem under the public safety activity that happened on Saturday, talking about Halloween safety. So just a reminder to people, please, please be safe out there.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor. Anyone else? City Manager?
At your seats this evening is the 2019 Community Report. The report summarizes the progress the organization is making toward the City Council and community priorities. We are continuing to improve the report. Next year's addition, for example, will include a picture of City Council and the mayor.[974.12][974.12](Laughter). If you have --
That's an improvement?
Yes, it is.
It isn't in here?
If you have other feedback, other suggestions for us, please let me know. I encourage everyone to take a look at the report. Also, the city has received, again, a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. The certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. Attaining this is a significant accomplishment for any organization. Our Finance Department and everyone who plays a part in making sure our books and accounts are top-notch are part of the city receiving this award. So I want to acknowledge the Finance Department and the others who have contributed to our success in reporting on our finances and our accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on the award to you and the Finance Department staff. That's really good work. Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Okay. No proclamations. Presentation, though. Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk about the Mayor's Resiliency Task Force and just give you a quick update on what's going on there. We've officially set the dates, and the handout should be in your packet there. So we've officially set the dates. We're going to do three meetings for the Resiliency Task Force. We're going to review some of the goals that we originally established, including, is 50,000 members of our community, getting them some level of preparedness training, a reasonable and feasible action? Looking at what's going to count towards that goal? Identify the survey questions and how we'll actually account for this, so we have quantifiable and quantitative results and methodologies. Identifying how we are going to instruct this and how we're going to do the training. And we have a number of great partners that have already agreed to participate in this, members of the City of Salem, as expected. But the Oregon Legislature, Corbin University, American Red Cross, Salem Kaiser School District, Oregon Department of Corrections, Marion County Emergency Management, and a number of others that have agreed to not only support but train their members and employees as well. So we have quite a great coalition going forward with this, and people are quite excited to get going on this and start counting the numbers towards our 50,000.
Very good. Any quick, Counselor Hoy?
Where will the meetings be held?
The first meeting will be here on Wednesday night, so at 6:00 here on Wednesday night.
Here, meaning in council chambers?
In council chambers, yes, sir.
I have one addition to your report. Counselor Nanki will serve as my alternate on this committee.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I forgot to ask Counselor Nanki if that's okay.[1161.32][1161.32](Laughter).
Understood.
Counselor Leung?
Thank you. So I'm taking a look at the members of the task force. Can you give a little bit more explanation first on who's the other, several other organizations may be represented, what that means? That's my first question. The second question I have is, I don't see representation from other diverse groups, especially those that may not have English as a first language. How are they going to be involved with this?
Certainly. So some of the other organizations that may be represented are some of the ones that are right below that, including Oregon State Hospital, SAFE Corporation, Salem Health Hospitals. We've also sent out several other emails and to some of the other diverse populations. I'm trying to think of some of them, and I just, I honestly haven't heard back from a few of them, so I didn't want to add them to the list. But the goal is to continue and make sure everybody in the community has an opportunity to take this training. We've, I've already had discussions with three of our Spanish instructors that do CERT in the community in and around, and they've, they're all very excited to offer their translation services or do presentations in the, in some of those communities. So we are looking for more. So if you have any other suggestions or other great champions from different communities, I'd be happy to take those members down and get them involved and do, continue the engagement and get everybody as much as possible. Thank you.
Could you just very briefly describe the goal of the council for this first, or committee for this?
Yes, sir. So the intent of the first meeting, let me just pull out my second sheet here. The intent of the first meeting is really to go through, review the goals, see if they are acceptable, go over the actual one-hour presentation that I've been giving throughout the community, and really discuss what our common themes and messages are. How do we make sure that we get everybody at least thinking with the same prepared mindset to be resilient, to be two weeks ready, and develop that mindset? Also have the conversation about what other trainings will count. So will the Red Cross's training count? There's a number of state agencies that do preparedness training already, including the State Office of Emergency Management. Will that training count towards this and, you know, in our community? Because they're already out there doing it. They're already doing it at the state buildings, the Oregon Lottery, Department of Transportation, Department of Education. These presentations are already going. So partnering with them to make sure we're talking the same talk and making sure everybody has that same mindset. So the goal of the first meeting is really to make sure that we are on the same page and that we do have a standard set of goals and themes and messages that people will help prepare the community through.
And your objective is, I mean, ultimately, where are we headed this first round? And I want you to explain that if I'm correct and understood it correctly, this is the first round.
Yes.
And there will be, we will be working on this in phases as we work our way through the community. I want to remind you, this came up during the State of the City and really was driven home, for me, by how many people did not have water when we needed to have water in our homes. And the realization that it may not be well-understood, that in a real catastrophe, you're talking kind of survival in place and that you have the kinds of things you need to have in your home prepared for that eventuality. It's, the only thing I could think of in my background was when I was a kid, as we waited for the bomb, you know, it had that same kind of thing, and you had a room or, in some cases, a bomb shelter that was prepared for the kind of catastrophe that might be associated with it. And in this case, you're preparing the community for what?
Thank you, Mayor. The, our modern-day version of the waiting for the bombs is waiting for a cascade, and that's the massive potential for the earthquake that's off the coast, and we could be shaking at 9.0 here. So seeing the infrastructure in the community really go through a massive disaster like that is a potential any day. The big goal here is going through the two weeks ready, encouraging people to have two weeks of food and water on hand, because sheltering in place and staying where you're comfortable at home until more services start to arrive. Having worked with FEMA and the state, we know, and their direction is try to get everybody two weeks ready, to be prepared to be on their own for up to two weeks. And that's the expectation that FEMA has of how long it will take them to get in here and start providing resources like food, water, and medication. So as a city, we're trying to prepare to help the population do that. But realistically, with 170,000, about 170,000 residents in Salem, 60,000 people that commute into Salem every day, and another 40,000 in the area that rely on our water and sewer services, 270,000 people is a lot to take on. So the more people that are prepared themselves, the better off we'll be.
Any questions? Counselor Leung?
Thank you. I have one more follow-up question. I don't know, it might actually be more of a City Attorney question, depending. For the Resiliency Task Force, are, is there a public testimony or possible if people attend?
So I'll turn it to Mr. Walsh, because I'm not sure of the way they've set up the meetings.
Currently, the meetings are open to the public. We haven't closed anything off. The big goal with this portion, the first phase of this task force, is to do the community education. As we move forward throughout the future, in future years, and down the road, as we gain more of a population, we can refine what we're doing with the task force and what we're doing in the community to try to help build resiliency in other ways. Resiliency is a very broad topic word, but we thought this was a really good achievable goal to start with, so start with successes that we can achieve. Thank you.
Would you, would you describe this as sort of a technical advisory committee that we're really, you're really working on the information, the curriculum, strategies for reaching the public? Is that kind of what's going on here?
Yes, sir. That would be correct.
Very good.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Okay. We have opportunity for the public to comment. These are on issues on the agenda, but not public hearings. Okay? Lynda Thompson? And you have three minutes, and then I'll ask you to stop. You'll see the red light go on. At the orange light, when it goes on, means you have one minute left, and when the red light goes on, please stop, or I'll ask you to. Very good. Ms. Thompson, if you'd introduce yourself, we'll move ahead.
I'm Lynda Thompson. I live at 2232 42nd Avenue, Southeast, okay, Salem. Okay. This, I'm responding, I'm actually responding to something on the docket on number three, the zone change. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Could you speak closer in, Erica?
Oh, I'm, I'm speaking on the zone change for the mobile home parks.
Right.
And the Sundell Mobile Home Park residents are interested in maintaining the character of the mobile home park that favors the residence purchase of the park, and we would like the city to incentivize the zone change based on Salem's conditions. Last spring, you approved the city to begin working on creating a similar zone change and add protections for mobile home parks in the City of Salem in an effort to provide low-middle-income housing and to combat homelessness and other losses to our vulnerable populations. The City of Portland's four criteria when developing their zone change was to encourage preservation as a low-moderate-income housing option, evaluate plans and investments for potential redevelopment pressures on existing mobile home parks, and the impact on park residents to protect this housing option, to facilitate replacement and alteration of manufactured homes within an existing mobile home park, and to encourage nonprofit ownership. It does not appear the City of Salem followed this criteria. The City of Salem recommends to incorporate the preservation of mobile home parks into the city's broader housing strategy when pursuing and distributing funding sources and updating the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan. It does not address the zone change. It is not complete and appears to be biased against the residents' request. Finding incentives for zone change seem to be the way other cities have attempted to preserve the mobile home parks, but it requires the city to do some research. The city report states that this would take a dedication of time, which the City of Salem did not complete for this report. For Portland, to determine their incentive plan, they held park stake meetings with residents, conduct analysis on impact and resident development and risk of displacing of the existing park residents. At Bend, they established an overlay zone because they had home buyers buying existing parks, clearing them out, and redeveloping them into single-family some divisions. The Bend overlay zone has not been challenged, and there have been no further closures. So therefore, the City of Salem should conduct adequate research and consider incentives that would be successful for the mobile home park preservation as part of a zone change before they present a recommendation to the city. In conclusion, we believe the report did not look at this issue as a whole and that it was a bias against our request. The research required to make a comprehensive recommendation was not conducted. We request that further work be completed on this issue and that the city recommend, recommendation not be approved at this time.
Right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Kaiser?
Just a comment. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for your comments. I just, I guess I want to make sure that there's an understanding of what the staff report is trying to do, and that is saying that, yes, more research and outreach and all the things you're talking about is needed. And that process would happen through the update to our comprehensive plan. through the update to our comprehensive plan.
I didn't see that anywhere in the recommendation.
That is what the staff report is saying, though. So that, that's what I just want to make sure that is, 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 is clear, is that...
And it says a one-line thing right here.
Yeah, and then the staff report below it describes what, what's going on with it. So anyways, I think it might be beneficial...
Well, it might not be clear.
It might be beneficial for you to, though, to talk with staff tonight, since you're here in person, because it's not, this isn't an issue that we're just moving on from. It will be considered in the future.
Well, the situation that I have is that I'm representing a bunch of mobile home residents who are vulnerable. We have the elderly, we have the disabled, we have the children, and they've been holding on now to like a feather since June for the hopes that you guys are going to move forward to do something to help us. And this report doesn't necessarily answer, give us any hope, really, at all. It sounds like you're just going to be kind of thrown into this big city movement plan where we're going to be lost, like, who would we call to get an update? I feel like for, for this last few months, I've been in the dark for this whole development.
That's, that's why I'm recommending that while you're here tonight, you should talk with staff or talk with the city manager even about, because it's not, it's not an issue that's going away, so...
I, okay, I did send a notice, and I asked for a response. Are you guys going to get on board with this? But to tell you the truth, I talked to somebody from them, from that department on Friday, and they said, "This is it." There was no further discussion that they were going to do more on this, except actually today, they said they were going to try to possibly help us get right of, right of, first right of rescission on the statute 90 from the state for when we competed to purchase the park, in which just turned out to be a huge disappointment for us, and we came up with $32.5 million and matched the corporate buyer, and we still lost the park.
Well, I'll direct you to Director Norm Wright, and I, I really do think that you should, you should chat with him, because it, like I said, it's not something that's, that's off our radar going away. It's a kind of a first step. The process to do what you're asking us to do is fairly complex, and it doesn't happen within even a six-month period, but I really would encourage you to talk with...
Well, yes, it takes time. That's why the, the other cities took time to do it. It takes research and time, and once you have the research done, then you can make a recommendation. I hope that you all will not approve this, because once this get approved, how am I going to be chasing this afterwards, trying to get it to have, say, "Hey, do you remember what she told me? You're still working on it, right?"
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and councilors. My name is Ross Schwarzenbruber, and I'm testifying on 1A, the appointment of the city councillor. About 10 months ago, I was here testifying about anti-corruption measures that other agencies are taking, specifically campaign finance reform, voter rights, and ethics reform. And one of the issues that I brought up that other cities are, are doing, like Corvallis, is ranked choice voting. And I'm thinking that if we look at the elections a little bit on how we're doing them differently, that they'll be less apt to make any mistakes on, on how we're implementing policy. And campaign finance reform, SJR 18, is going to be on the ballot in 2020, and that's going to allow agencies like this to set their own campaign limits if it passes. And I think it'd be great if you guys could take a look at that also. And as far as ethics reform, maybe we could, you could take a look at the revolving door between lobbyists and elected officials and set up some type of time period where lobbyists can't be elected officials before or after, because it's just really too much influence for certain individuals to have, to be elected officials and lobbyists. There's a group here in Salem called Represent Salem Us, and we're working on those three issues, campaign finance reform, voter rights, and ethics reform. Our next meeting is Sunday, November 3, 2:00 p.m. at the SAIU, that's at 1430 Commercial Street, Southeast. I really think it'd be great if we could kind of step back as a community and take a look at how we're implementing policy to address possible corruption. And I really think that this is, at the federal level, we're being exposed to quite a bit of corruption, and that's working its way down slowly through all the agencies, state, regional, city. And we really should, as Americans, kind of, you know, appreciate the fact that we're able to do this, and that we have abilities to have a majority vote rather than just a plurality vote. And ranked choice voting will solve that issue, or star voting. It's just something we really need to be taking a look at. I don't want to go back in 10 months and see more corrupt policies being enacted. It'd be great if we can just, you know, come together as a community and address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Matt Hale.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city councilors. I'm Matt Hale from Ward Number Four. I'm here tonight to offer three compelling reasons why, why the city should refer the proposed city operating fee to the voters and not take actions themselves. First, it's important for the voters to decide this issue since the proposal's magnitude on the average citizen is far greater than the combined city bonds for the police station and library. Given the average home assessed at $200,000, a homeowner pays $76 for those two bonds, but this fee would be $96 over the course of a year. That's 26.3% greater, and that fee would be permanent and indexed for inflation every year. Second, given my preliminary research into the streetlight fee on our water and sewer bills, I really question whether this proposal is already full of bad assumptions, no built-in oversight measures, and lack of transparency. The streetlight fee was, was presented to us as ratepayers, voters, as a narrow fee to begin, quote, "establish standards for the design and installation of streetlights and to offset the cost of providing a streetlight system for the benefit of the public," end quotes. Yet my research shows that by transitioning to these LED lights from high-pressure sodium lights, should have saved about 50% or more on our electricity costs in that streetlight fee. And we did see a reduction from 2017 to 2018, but this year, in this year's budget, it went up by 37.2% because the city decided to add park lighting into the streetlight fee, into that fund. That's not what the streetlight fund was designed for. It was not meant to be a fund that could be sweet to pay for other city expenses. I asked the city to go back and look at that decision. I asked that they reverse that decision and that they account to us as voters and ratepayers why they use those funds. And third, the city really has made no attempts to, to decrease city expenditures and adopt some shared sacrifice. Once again, I presented some options to you in the past, and additional option is you could just go ahead and freeze overtime for the rest of this year. You have almost $3 million built into the overtime budget. Take a look at your contracts, see if there's some contracts that could be eliminated or scaled back. So don't expect to have us to have an open checkbook until you can demonstrate to us as voters and taxpayers that you can balance your own checkbook. The voters and the ratepayers of this city have a right to vote on this proposal, and you have a responsibility to demonstrate that need to us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hale. Any questions? Okay, Mark Wig.
I can wait till those are handed out, because I'm referring to charts. I live in Scan Neighborhood. And I'm here to thank our new councillor. You'll find out, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of responsibility, and we are so lucky to have so many people, good people, willing to give their time. And I also wanted to give you a little update on a couple of things in town. Bicycle and pedestrian use, according, these charts are from our Salem, and bicycle and pedestrian use in Salem today, bicycle commuters make up 0.4% of the commuters. That's pretty low. In context, Portland, Corvallis, and Eugene are over 5%. Whatever we're doing, it's not working. And then you, you say, "Well, 0.4, it's got to be getting better." No, since two, in 2010, we had 1%, and we're now 0.4%. We lost 60% in 10 years. What's the trend? That's not good. We got to do something different. So if we don't do something different, you've heard the next chart, and that's the chart of fatalities and injuries of pedestrians and bicyclists. If we don't change the road designs, if we made our goals and had 10 times more people out there, we have 10 times more accidents. We don't want that. Painted lines on busy streets is not a good bicycle system. The people have told you that, they're not using it. The next one is what do people want? Look at the top three things: trails, a better environment, and a way to get around without a car. That's what people want, trails and parks. We can give people trails and parks. The nice thing is, it doesn't cost money. In your ward, I've helped build three different trails with volunteers. We can build a lot of trails in Salem. Your job as a councillor is to help implement this, and that is by, through the city manager. This is a strong city manager government. If you ask the city manager once in a while, "How's trails?", after a while, he's going to start coming back with, "Well, we have this, this, and this going on." Right now, I don't know what he could come back with if you asked him, "How are trails? Are we building what people want?" And so, thanks for serving.
Mark, I have just one question. A number came up earlier this evening, I just wanted to hear what your thinking is on it, that we have 60,000 people commuting into the city each day to work. Do you think that affects that percentage of commuters?
It, it might, but when you compare us to Eugene and Corvallis and Portland, they all have a lot of commuters, and they're all 10 times more people.
Yeah, so you're just...
10 times, come on!
Yeah, but we don't, okay, no, I, I don't, I'm really surprised when I hear these numbers, but I just wondered if you thought it, apparently, it's, it's part of the underlying statistical situation in every city, so...
Well, one of the things that we can do is put park and pedal lots. So at the end of the trail, before they get into town, like on Highway 22 and other places...
So like out of Costco?
They can park the car, hop on their bike, and get into town.
There you go.
On a trail.
There you go. Okay, thanks, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Troy Park.
Hi, I'm Troy Park. I'm here to talk about my new development in downtown Salem. Basically, I purchased a, a office building, six-story office building that only has two business tenants in it. So I'm applying for your tax abatement program, which is a, a great program. I did the same thing in Portland, and I think it brings more housing to downtown Salem. In my experience with the housing down here, you guys need more of it, so, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to take this six-story building that has 32 units in it, and only two of them are being used, and, and make 30 condo-grade apartment units in it. There's also going to be a meeting room on the lower floor, so what it's basically going to do is bring more people to downtown core. They are going to make pretty good money because they're condo-style units with laundry facilities and everything inside the, the unit, so, so they're going to be higher wage earners, spend more money downtown, and to my knowledge, I don't think there's any high-rise apartment units in downtown Salem, so these actually have views of the capital, and, and I think it's going to be a, a good project for downtown Salem.
Great, thank you very much. Have you, have you talked with our urban development department? Have you met with them yet?
Is that the person I talked to about this tax abatement program? I...
Yeah, I just want to get you on the right, right course to kind of get to us. And Annie, could you get together with Mr. Park and get this, get him on the...
It's on urgent.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, great. Apparently, you're on the right track.
Perfect.
I'm sorry, I caught me off-guard.
Are we good?
Nope.
Oh, Councilor Lewis.
Good. One question. These, when you get this done, these will be market rate units?
Yes.
Thanks.
But again, they're, they're on the higher end, so they're, they'll bring higher wage-earning people to downtown Salem, so...
Thank you, Mr. Park. I'm curious about the community room. Is there going to be a charge for a use of that community room?
No, it's actually, it's actually going to be free, so...
And are you aware that both the urban development department and the Salem Housing Authority has programs for affordable housing that could give you additional tax breaks, and they could partner with you to get some actual tax reductions or abatements?
I did not know that.
Perhaps you might want to talk to Nicole Oates, who is the head of the Salem Housing Authority, who has done these sort of programs that end up giving you the same sort of breaks you're looking for in terms of cost, but also give the city a wider variety of, of housing, of, of variety and types, as opposed to only just upper-high-end condo units, which we have a need for, but we have a bigger need for medium condo units and lower-priced condo units. And I'm sure Ms. Gorsky, who's here from the Urban Development Department, could also help you out with this, and there may be another way to go with this that would get you what you're interested in, in terms of development, that gives you a return on your investment...
Yes.
But it also could help the city in terms of a wider range of housing types. So I'd encourage you to talk to Ms. Gorsky, and maybe she can also help you talk with Ms. Oates.
I do, I do own lower-income apartments, too.
Okay. All righty, great, thanks, Mr. Park.
Thank you.
Well, that's it for people signed up for public comment. Anyone else? Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following exceptions. Item 3.2A, pulled by Councilor Young. Item 3.3B, pulled by Councilor Hoy.
Second. Second biotic. Any discussion on any of these?
Would you like me to outline it?
Yeah.
All right, we have item 3.1A, which are the draft city council minutes from the October 14, 2019 meeting. We have item 3.1B, which is the draft council minutes from our October 21, 2019 meeting, and item 3.1C are the draft council work session minutes from our October 21, 2019 work session. We have item 3.3A, which authorizes the city manager to execute the attached lease with the, with Oregon Mobile Pet Care LLC. We have item 3.3C, which affirms the adoption of the decision of the hearings officer for conditional use slash class-three site plan review case number CU SPR 19-04. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. We'll open our first public... We'll open our first public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the Planning Commission decision for comprehensive plan change, zone change, zone change case number CPC, ZC, ZC 19-10. The applicable criteria for the comprehensive plan map change is SRC Chapter 6 and 4.025E2 and SRC 265.00E for the zone change. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following: The applicant's limited to 10 minutes; the appellant is limited to 10 minutes; neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes; and other interested parties are limited to three minutes. With the applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, Planner 2 with Community Development Department. I'd request that the presentation, staff report, attachments, and recording of the Planning Commission hearing be entered into the record. The applicant is currently developing Phase 1 of a mixed-use development at 1221 Riverbend Road Northwest, and now owns some adjacent properties to the north. So this application includes comprehensive plan changes to mixed use and zoning changes to mixed use 2 for proposed Phase 2, as well as a comprehensive plan change to commercial and zoning changes to retail commercial for part of Phase 1. The applicant submitted a conceptual plan, but this land use case this evening is reviewing the proposed land use designations and not the specific details of the conceptual plan. Site plan review would be required prior to development if the proposed designations are approved. The property is located on Wallace Road Northwest, a major arterial under Oregon Department of Transportation jurisdiction, and Riverbend Road Northwest, a collector. Other streets nearby are Brush College, a minor arterial, and other collectors Lindwood Drive and Wintergreen Avenue. La Jolla Drive dead ends into the subject property. Access to development on the subject property would be from a two-way driveway that's now under construction near the signalized intersection of Riverbend Road and one or more right-in, right-out driveways from Wallace Road. The applicant is in the purchase of purchasing, in the process of purchasing 2465 Wallace from ODOT. This serial photo is from 2016, showing the existing development in the area. Development to the southeast and, so the south and east include single-family dwellings in subdivisions, and some are on larger lots. To the north, we have an apartment complex and a convenience store and gas station. Then north of Brush College Road Northwest, there are several apartment complexes and a residential care facility. The property now includes single-family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial designations. Surrounding properties have those designations as well. An area east of Wallace, between the city limits, the red dotted line, and the urban growth boundary, the heavy black line, was designated multifamily as a result of the Salem multifamily residential land study about 20 years ago. The applicant has requested to change the northern properties to mixed use and the ODOT The West Salem Neighborhood Plan, effective in 2004, includes a recommendation change, recommended changes to the generalized land use map that represents city council's direction for staff and the implementation of the neighborhood plan. This map designated this area as a center, shown here in purple, and the area with red and purple diagonal lines is a center over existing commercial zoning. The center designation is intended to conclude residential, neighborhood, retail, restaurants, employment, public space, and/or civic uses. Be developed in a manner to provide a sense of place, compact urban form, neighborhood vitality, and innovative design. Within centers, buildings are to be oriented to the pedestrian. There should be accessibility to transit and major roads, and connectivity with the surrounding neighborhood while still accommodating use of the automobile. The subject properties are currently zoned: Single-family residential, RS; duplex residential, RD; CO, commercial office; and CR, retail commercial. Properties to the north, they're already zoned, RM2 and commercial retail. To the west and south, they're single-family residential. To the east, in Polk County, we have suburban residential and EFU, exclusive farm use. The applicant's requesting to change the northern area to multifamily, I'm sorry, mixed use 2, and a small strip of the southern property, as well as the ODOT property to CR. The boundary between the CO and CR zone is not set in stone yet, and we do have a condition of approval that is going to require that the applicant submit a legal description. And recently, they've submitted a property line adjustment that would eliminate the line around the ODOT property and move that to the west, and that would be a logical place to put the boundary between the CO on the west and the CR in the eastern section. The closer view from 2016 shows the property prior to the beginning of development on Phase 1. Several large oak trees remain in the northern area of the subject property, and some of them have been preserved in the southern area. So they have a few photos of the development that's underway. That's looking toward Wallace Road and to some of the oaks that have been preserved. This is an existing accessway that runs out to Wallace Road. These are the apartments that are located north of the property. And the applicant has been in the process of constructing a sewer line across the property. This is the western end of the accessway that runs towards some existing single-family residential development. And then one more picture of those single-family residential homes, and another section of the sewer line construction. The proposed designations, the Planning Commission found, are suitable due to an alteration in circumstances: social, economic, and demographic patterns, need for additional commercial and multifamily residential land, and a surplus of single-family residential land. The proposed designations are equally or better suited and allow development, if needed, neighborhood commercial services and housing. The Planning Commission found the proposal meets the criteria for comprehensive plan changes and zone changes. Those include availability of public services, logical urbanization, conformance to Salem area comprehensive plan policies, and statewide planning goals and administrative rules, serving the public interest, and being in the general benefit, and no significant effect on a transportation facility. The properties within the West Salem Neighborhood Association boundary. The Neighborhood Association voted to appeal the Planning Commission decision because they thought that the testimony submitted to the Planning Commission regarding traffic studies and TPR, Traffic Transportation Planning Rule Analysis, Traffic Impacts Mitigation, designation of systems development charges towards Wallace Road mitigation projects, and a request for permanent trails and community connections were not adequately addressed. Individual citizens also commented with similar concerns, primarily traffic, requests for traffic mitigation. We had a few that requested a development moratorium in West Salem, and several that requested permanent trails and community connections through conditions of approval. The appeal also included some questions about trip caps. A trip cap may be imposed to ensure development does not have a significant effect on the transportation system, or traffic engineering staff are here this evening to answer questions about that. They have not previously recommended a trip cap, but staff would support a trip cap. And other questions were regarding how we enforce trip caps. That would happen at the time of development. So the trip cap is calculated based on preliminary estimates of the types of development that would be proposed for the land and what the zone change would support. Then there are ratios developed by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and published in their Manual of Transportation Engineering Studies. So at the time of development, staff would look at the proposed uses, apply those ratios, and determine and ensure that the proposal does not exceed the trip cap. In response to the testimony that was received prior to the Planning Commission decision, the Planning Commission found that, because the conceptual plan's not being approved at this time, a condition dedicating open space to the public would not be advisable, and it would in effect be taking a private property for public use. The Planning Commission found that the city and Oregon Department of Transportation concurred the proposal would have no significant effect on the transportation system and met the requirements for the transportation planning rule. They found that moratorium would require city council action and a state-specified process outside of the current land use application. They found that case law would prohibit mitigation that's disproportionate to the impacts, and they found that allocation of transportation SDCs is a council decision and would not be appropriate as part of the land use case. And staff affirm, recommends that the council affirm the September 5 Planning Commission decision.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll have some questions after hearing from the applicant, appellant, and public. I have three people signed up labeled as appellate, and I just wanted to check, see how you wanted to handle that. You have 10 minutes as the applicant. If you have a single applicant representative, they could talk for 10 minutes, and the other two could each have three or something like that, and I'm not sure how you would like to package that up. Jeff, do you... Or each get about three and a half minutes?
Could we have a little more? I misread the agenda. Jeffrey James, representing Scott Martin Construction.
So you'll be the applicant spokesman?
Yes, however, we brought our traffic engineer is here, and so I misread your agenda. It said 15 minutes, so I thought we could split it and have eight minutes each or seven minutes each.
Are we right on time?
He's signed up for three minutes anyway, so maybe that would work.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we let you go, and we'll pull up...
Yeah, I'll try and keep it within the budget.
You got 10 minutes, so...
10 minutes? Okay.
I wanted to know.
Yeah, members of the mayor and planning commission, good evening. I usually like to speak without notes, but with a 95-page staff report, my notes are fairly detailed. I'm gonna shorten them, but I'm gonna read from my notes, so please don't get offended. Scott Martin Construction, I've worked with them on several developments. They do quality developments. They start with mapping the trees, and then my job as architect is to locate the buildings so that they fit within the trees. So we save the oak trees and all the big trees, and I think it adds to the value of the development with that approach. It's kind of unique in Salem. I think, I don't know if we're the only ones doing that, but people like that. The neighbors like that, and so we've got a lot of compliments. The plan here is for some housing. It's a mixed-use development. This is second phase of Riverbend Center, and some neighborhood shops. So the idea with a center, as per the West Salem Neighborhood Plan, is that those shops are connected to every neighborhood street, surrounding street, by pathways. And I can guarantee that the city code requires those pathways, and that Pamela and her colleagues will be watching every move, that those pathways will be implemented. They don't need to be public right-ofways, but they are open to the public. And the potential with that is, when you connect the shops to the neighbor's streets, that potentially is gonna reduce travel trips. The traffic study doesn't even include it, but I can see that, you know, you can wander out from your house in the surrounding streets and go and get a cup of coffee or whatever the shops offer, and you're not gonna drive down to Land Creek Road or downtown or something. So that's gonna be a help in reduction. So anyway, as Pamela pointed out, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this. We've had a positive response from the staff and a lot of the neighbors all the way through. And, but after the Planning Commission hearing, West Salem had a meeting and took a position, actually, for the first time, they took a position and voted to appeal Riverbend, as we call it, Riverbend Center, because of traffic, because of traffic on Wallace. You know, that's a continuing issue. And so then there was discussion in the motion about exacting some more mitigation other than just SDCs. Well, SDCs, we're charged millions of dollars for SDCs, so that's, more mitigation would of course raise rents, and we're talking about affordable housing and trying to keep rents down. And they also said in the motion, they want a dialogue with the council about other concerns besides traffic. So this issue tonight is not really, as I see it, about the zone change, because staff and a lot of the neighbors like what we do. It's about traffic on Wallace, and what are we gonna do about it? The SDCs that will be billed at the time of billing permit will be in the millions of dollars, because the rule of thumb is about, close to a million dollars they charge us for each hundred apartment units. So Phase 1 and Phase 2 combined is probably a couple of million dollars that Mr. Martin will be billed before he can pick up his billing permit, so... West Salem, when I was over there for a meeting, they talked about, well, SDCs, they should be kept, West Salem SDCs should be kept in West Salem. Well, that's not city policy. So they'd have to kind of discuss that in detail. And then wanting more exacted from the applicant, says the planning division just explained, you know, that's not legal either without some city policy changes. So, but one of the appellants actually said in his letter, "The neighbors are not opposed to this project." Mr. Easley said, "The neighbors do not want to stop the project, but they want more mitigation somehow. It's not clear how they're gonna get it." So we have this situation where the traffic study shows acceptable traffic impact, they use another adjective. The city traffic engineer concurs with that and says the same thing. The ODOT traffic engineer says the same thing. So we've got three professional engineers. There's one here, there's one over there, and then the ODOT engineer, all agreeing. And we have to compare that with three well-intentioned neighbors who have their opinions about traffic. And I know who I'd believe. I'd probably believe the licensed engineer and the, you know, the expert on traffic. And the ODOT letter, we got another letter from ODOT today reaffirming what they've said that consisted all along. They say, "We have concluded this change, this project, does not constitute a significant impact to intersections on Wallace Road." That's the state of Oregon today. So we have your congestion task force with 16 improvements to Wallace Road. We have Marine Drive is partially built, and when that's built, there'll be another parallel route to Wallace. Center Street Bridge improvements, ODOT has plans for that. So moratoriums, this is a moratorium on development, if they're talking about today. That is, that would be a policy that the city council would have to set. So we have letters from several neighbors, which I can maybe address in rebuttal. I agree with many of them. The pedestrian walkways that they're concerned about will be, will happen. So in conclusion, with my part, and then I'll defer to our traffic engineer for a few minutes. Because the West Salem motion to appeal is about traffic and not about the actual zone change, I want to defer now to our traffic engineer, Rick Nice of Green Light Engineering, to tell you about the traffic study findings. And then maybe after Rick has spoken, maybe you could ask us some questions. And then maybe after Rick has spoken, maybe you could ask us some questions if you have any.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nice, if you'd introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Rick Nice. I'm with Greenlight Engineering. I'm the principal traffic engineer at Greenlight. I have 20 years of experience in transportation engineering. I'm a registered professional engineer. I will be brief. I wanted to note that we are in support of the city imposing a trip cap on the project. We think that's a good idea to go ahead and do that. I want to note also that I did submit a new letter into the record this evening primarily to respond to Mr. Easterly's comments that are dated also today. The city and ODOT staff have been very diligent in their review of the traffic impact study and the other materials. At one point in time, both city and ODOT staff did have comments on the original traffic study. We responded to all those comments and their support has been complete and they've been supportive of the project throughout. Again, as Jeff mentioned just now, we received more comments from ODOT today indicating support for the project, that there is no significant effect on Wallace Road or any other roadway. So we urge you to deny the appeal and to affirm Planning Commission's decision. And I want to again note that, you know, there's ODOT and city traffic engineers that have years and years of experience reviewing these things, working on these things, lots of training. They're professional engineers in their field, as am I. So I encourage you to go with what the experts have found and been diligent in their review of. So if you have any questions available?
Great, thank you. Any questions for either Mr. James or Mr. Nice? Counselor Lewis.
I first want to disclose, I don't know if this is the right time, I should have done it earlier, but I made a site visit last week on Phase One and I don't think that would keep me from making a decision on this issue. My questions are for Mr. James.
Did you talk to anybody?
I did talk to the workers that were there.
Do you want to declare an ex parte contact or something just to make sure you're covered?
Well, my question was, I was looking for Jeff James and the question was, is he here? And the answer was no.
No? No, okay.
Mr. James.
What was the question, Jim?
Well, I haven't started them yet. I actually have a few.
Oh, sorry. Not here.
First, I wanted to make a comment. I think historically, we have been on the opposite side of issues and, but I have always admired your work.
Thank you.
This is, could be another example of that work. After 10 years on the Planning Commission and five years now on council, the idea that a proposal like this is coming to us with two conditions. I mean, I'm used to seeing more.
Two?
Two conditions.
Oh, yes.
There are two conditions that have been implied, not 20, not 30.
It's almost zero conditions because it's a housekeeping condition.
This will lead to a question. I, I don't know, I think about three years ago when you first approached the West Salem Neighborhood Association about Phase One. And it had what I'll call universal acceptance. It now appears, over the last short amount of time, that you are at odds with the West Salem Neighborhood Association. And it appears that that issue involves traffic. So, one question. You've mentioned, I think it's so true, that the density availability of this Phase Two, you would be building less than the acceptable density.
Yes. Mixed use Two, I believe is a fairly new zone. I've never used it before. It actually allows a much higher density. We're actually lower than I thought of RM2, which is what, up to 28 units per acre. We're way below that. So we are much lower density, maybe because we were tree huggers, but it's much lower density than we could squeeze in. So I think the end result is attractive. Neighbors seem to like it and so that's just our style. And it, I think the issue, if I may, with West Salem is we got new folks there now, a lot of new folks, and there was some disagreement over the, over the bridge. I know I was branded as being a bridge opponent and so that was pointed out to me forcefully at the neighborhood meeting. And my reaction was that, no, I'm a bridge supporter. I was the city council, city's representative on the Salem Neighborhood Transportation Study 40 years ago this year, where we planned two, two bridges, a north bridge and a south bridge. And we actually were working for getting 80% federal funding. So we had our act together. I'd love to get that revived, but what I was against was a bridge. And I agreed with the city council position is what I did, the majority city council. But I was branded by Craig Evans as being somebody that, you know, disagreed with him. And so there was a little bit of feeling there, but I respect all those guys over there and the land use committee has changed, but I'm a land use chair, so I get along with my fellow land use chair, EM Easterly and, you know, my friends over there. And I used to be president of the West Salem Rotary Club, so I have an attachment and fondness for that area.
Okay.
You know what, I appreciate that. It kind of leads me to a short question. And this is to go to the, I guess, level of disappointment that you've seen now on the West Salem Neighborhood Association. You know, the only thing I can think of is the bridge was an issue important enough to enough people that it has changed attitudes. Would you agree?
Can you rephrase that again?
It appears that there's a level of anxiety in the West Salem neighborhoods that is greater than it's been in a long time. And one suggestion of that would be that it's caused by the reaction to this city council's decision not to respond to the Lupo appeal.
Yes, I believe that's where the friction came from. And anybody who's visited West Salem around the time of that decision knows that. And so as I was one who wasn't very vocal about it, but I, people knew that I was on the side of the majority of the city council, that that was the wrong place and it needed regional and federal funding. And just my history on the transportation coordinating committee, I thought there was a better way, but that was just my personal opinion, but it actually concurred with the majority of the city council. And that went against the grain with a lot of people over there, the bridge supporters. I didn't fit in. And so that's the difference between Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One went very smoothly. Phase Two went extremely smoothly on a staff level and, but the new, the new folks there were a little more militant about traffic. But now it turns out that the experts are telling us it's not, it's not that big a deal on the, on the traffic. But we're all working towards, or you are, on your congestion task force on 16, 17 solutions to help traffic on Wallace Road. So I think there's a solution there eventually. And we'll all play a part in making it work.
Yeah, I think, I think we've covered this pretty much.
Yes, I'm sorry.
One more comment, please. Just a comment, not a question. You mentioned twice the new folks at West Salem. I think we're gonna be hearing from some long-term, very, very involved West Salem Neighborhood members and former officers. So it's apparently not just the new folks that are upset. Thanks.
Very good.
Short question, if I may.
Let's get a short answer, too.
Okay. I'm just curious, Mr. James, about you said that the neighbors, and I take it you mean the immediate neighbors, are either not opposed or in favor of your project. On that map up there, are you discussing the yellow neighborhood to the south and west? Those are the people you've talked to?
Yeah, especially on, well, on Phase, Phase Two, we haven't had a lot of reaction. One gentleman was quite comfortable with the proposal.
Which, which portions are you talking about? Are neighbors in favor, I think's what the council was asking.
Counselor Anderson, I think, is talking about the yellow, single-family area.
The yellows around it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And we got the most input from the area to south of River Bend and west of the property, especially Phase One, where they appreciated that they were getting a fair number of large trees left. And that provided a screen that they appreciated between their homes and this apartment building that's gonna be maybe 70 feet away. The same thing from the west side, a screen of trees. And so that was why it was popular and we got compliments.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Anderson, you are the appellant. You have 10 minutes. Mr. Anderson, are you representing the Neighborhood Association?
Yes, Steve Anderson, West Salem. I'm representing the West Salem Neighborhood Association as the appellant, chair of the last Salem Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee now after the most recent vote. You have this in your, in your, in your packet, it was handed out, but I want to talk to you just about the process in terms of what we'd do if you go through it by your desk. Mr. Lewis has made comments to the Neighborhood Association through the years to be respectful of staff and I thank Jim for that comment because there has been some vocal people lately. But my comments today, when I speak of staff and due diligence and failure to follow the regulations is directly at the facts in the matter, not directed at staff in any derogatory way. As you look at this here, the decision comes down to what staff cites on page 35 of their report, which is OAR 660S, it applies to land use 12. There are three sections in that. Section 1A, one section 1B, and section 1C. Staff in their report, there only references A and B. They do not reference C. I've spoken at least twice to Mr. Frickie for the ODOT and based on experience as an ODOT leader on the OTIA 3 bridge project passed over mobility issues, there is this upper C which needs to be addressed. So the fundamental heart of this issue comes down to, did we follow the applicable rules and regulations and policies that ODOT has for doing this kind of project? If the answer to that question, does Wallace Road meet mobility standards, was yes, you would follow the staff line of the report and use their data. If the answer is no, and we have data from the congestion release task force, the Salem River Crossing and the Glen Creek Project, the point at Glen Creek that says mobility standards, and staff has testified to this body that Wallace Road does not meet mobility standards. Therefore, you have to follow that second line. Staff's analysis, doing their analysis and their presentation does not follow the applicable rules. In fact, when asked by the Planning Commission on this matter, before, before the Planning Commission, staff was asked, is this the way that it should be done? And they said, no. They provided false testimony that prejudiced Planning Commission. And they said, why are they saying it's not a problem to follow this application? They said, if they're relying on these conclusions of the TIA from the applicant. So it's our assertion that you need to follow that process to the right, OAR 660121C, because mobility standards are not being met. Therefore, if you were to do this kind of decision, looking at this, 1F.5 is required to do the analysis. And it says, if the volume to capacity ratio is, is gonna increase, then you have to say it's significant, except if there are numbers that are considered less than significant. You go down that line and you say, look at that, there is 1,609 ADTs from River Bend Phase Two. Average daily traffic is the condition with 1F in the ODOT policies and procedures and rules. So in this case, we have more than 1,000 trips. Therefore, and if you look down there, current volume of the capacity is 1.01 at Glen Creek. The applicant's TIA says it's 1.24. So if you go at the very top, we have an increase in VOC and we have an increase in traffic counts over 1,000. There needs to be an action here by staff. So the decision on this point is that since we have an increase in the volume to capacity, it must be declared significant. It does not have a less than significant number of trips. It's over 1,000. Therefore, the action required here was staff now following this line of rule and regulation would have to declare the project significant, period. They, since it has more than 1,008T and the volume of capacity ratio goes from 1.01 to 1.24. Once you declare it significant, then that has to be in the record. And we're asking the council send this back to staff to correct these errors and omissions, declare the project significant, and then follow this next step. Because the rules say, one, and it says in the, let's go back here. If you look at the previous statement here at the very top, this comes out of section 1F.5, would be subject to the existing processes. So this application is subject to the existing processes because it fails 1F.5. So what do you have to do as a staff member? If you were looking at this on your desk, first, you would have to go to OAR 662, sections A through A, and look at the mitigation opportunities you have there under the rules. So you develop mitigation strategies for the project, then you must have those approved by ODOT. So you have to have a conversation with ODOT on those. Then the rule says there that you have to do a new VOC analysis. Now what's interesting here is the applicant in their process, and Mr., and it's in the report here, it's, it's Greenfield Engineering Attachment E, they said that there should be a trip cap for this. And they say that these, these traffic numbers for Phase One and Phase Two should be added together and then done in the planning phase, which is outside this process. They did not do include the 10,000, what's the number up there? They did not include that River Bend Phase One number. So there's 609 trips, 1,609 Phase Two, 1,083 in Trip One. That's not included in our traffic impact analysis. So you do the new VOC calculations and if you look at the far right there, it says specifically in the rule, when applying the OPHP mobility standards to calculate and consider the VOCs and mitigation, you have to meet the adopted standard for Wallace Road, which is 0.95. This discussion as to what it's gonna look like in 2025 and is it significant is immaterial based on this rule, part of the rule. It's immaterial. It's not applicable. It cannot be considered. And see if you're in compliance with the mobility standards. So we are asking as a neighborhood association, and let me say, the neighborhood association likes the project. They think it's a good thing for our community. They want to see it go forward, but we think that it should be mitigated because it, staff did not follow the proper rules and regulations on this process. They had to declare it significant based under 1F.5. They have to develop mitigation strategies. They have to get ODOT approval on those and then they have to recalculate the VOC and see if it meets the target, which is 0.95. At best, it should not be greater than 1.01, which it is today. No further degradation is the requirement's under 1.1F, not significant. And one of the things that's interesting on that, if you look at the trip analysis and EM Easterly will provide some data on it, it's really inconsistent, but one of the things that has got people upset is that when you look at all these apartments going out onto Wallace Road, these 1,069 trips, in that TIA, they say only 16 of those trips are gonna pass through Wallace Road at Glen Creek in the AMP. That doesn't make sense. 16 trips, 1,089, 1,060. The issue is. The issue is, project says that this additional traffic will cause impacts. If you follow the proper rules and regulations under ODOT, which is the C section, staff did not look at C, they ignored C. They have to then go through this analysis, which comes back to what I presented here. They did not follow the rules, they did not do their due diligence, and they made false testimonies and false statements to the Planning Commission and the report to City Council as to what the requirements are. Therefore, we are asking council send this back to staff to, one, correct and have staff use the proper procedures, go through the mitigation process, confer with ODOT, recalculate the VOCs, and then come back with conditions that mitigate and cause no more degradation of traffic on Wallace Road, period.
Counselor Lewis, real quick, just to be sure, you're talking about mitigation outside of the SDC charges?
Pardon?
You're talking about mitigation outside of the SDC charges?
I would hope in this process that those SDCs and this mitigation could be tied together so there's no additional charge to the applicant. I think there's ways to do that. But if, in case that doesn't happen, the rules allow for additional mitigations, it does not trigger Nolan and Dolan because it is a significant effect. So Counselor Lewis, I would like to see it come out of the SDC charges personally.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Counsel Anderson.
Thanks for coming down, Mr. Anderson. What, what are some examples of mitigation that, that might occur if we follow your line of thinking and reasoning? And is, the second part of that question, is a trip cap, is that kind of a mitigation?
Trip cap is one of the mitigations required under the A through C requirements. There are things here that says, to provide additional transportation facilities, Marine Drive may be part of that. There's another one here. You could modify the capacity and performance standards as a council, but you would have to go to ODOT and get their approval and have that adopted in the transportation system plan.
Okay.
So, but there are five areas here specifically that are in the statute, and then it's also in the development guidelines of May 4, 2017, on how to implement these. But staff has.
But the mitigations he asked about, you've given him the answer.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Scott. Excuse me for going on too much, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Lewis?
I want to go back to your opening statement. The comment about, I have mentioned a couple of times, the importance of having staff involved with the West Salem Neighborhood Association thought process. And I want to, my question's about process, because I, I don't see that that's happened. After the Planning Commission meeting on September 3, there was a Neighborhood Association meeting on September 16. The, the issue of the River Bend Phase 2 was not on the agenda. And I, I wonder why not? I mean, as a former Chair of the Neighborhood Association, as somebody who participated at the Planning Commission meeting, and I'm guessing was there when the Planning Commission made its decision, that left 12 days for you to suggest that the issue be on the agenda. I'm curious why you didn't.
The issue was referred to the Chair. His decision was, as an executive body, they decided to, to appeal this and that they wanted to just take it up under the land use provisions. But yes. And I think, you know, procedural issues, I think, or hopefully our new Chair will be a little tighter on procedures, but that recommendation was made specifically by myself to our Chair. To have it on there specifically, he chose to leave it under, it says, make it under the land use report.
So there was a request to have this specific issue put on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I was the one that did that, sir.
Okay. Well, I can understand why you would do that, because it resulted in no notice going out to the Neighborhood Association, no specific notice, which meant that the developer wasn't aware that it was going to be discussed, didn't have an opportunity to speak. Staff, whether they would or would not come, were not there to, to address the issues. The Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Association did vote without it being on the agenda, which there's a question about whether, what that means.
I think if you're talking procedurally, the way that the bylaws say is that the Executive Committee can make a decision and bring it forth to the body, since the Neighborhood Association went from two months.
We're kind of into the weeds here a bit on.
Yeah.
West Salem Neighborhood Association politics and procedure. Do you have any questions, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, one. Would your opinion, hypothetically, of course, would your opinion be different if there was, in fact, today, a third bridge just south of River Bend that went to, across the Willow River?
As you know, I spoke against the third bridge for various reasons, but if there was another bridge that provided connection and reduced the traffic volumes on Wallace Road where it met the target of .095, that mobility standard, then there would be a whole different position. The staff's approach would be in the right to do it. The key here is, does Wallace Road meet mobility standards? The rules say if it doesn't, you go that process to the right, which we are advocating be done. If not, you follow staff's process, and it would have gone that way. So.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Kaser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Anderson. I just want to make sure I understand kind of the, the crux of the argument that you're presenting, and that's really about OAR 660, I think in your words, not being abided by. And I would just want to make sure that that, that is really the issue we're talking about here, is that West Salem Neighborhood Association feels that the applicant's traffic engineer, ODOT, and the city all did not do that correctly. They did not abide by OAR 660. Am I, am I interpreting that correctly?
That is the heart of the matter.
Okay.
The rules say you have to, you have three choices. And.
Yeah. And that's what I just want to make sure, is that you're, is that the, the crux of the issue is, is the Neighborhood Association believes that that was not abided by.
And if, had it been abided by, there would have been some conditions to mitigate the impacts.
And then just to be clear, not abided by the applicant, the city, or ODOT?
Well, ODOT, if you read that slide up here, right there in the center, the burden of proof is with the local agency, it's not with ODOT. ODOT, when they say anything about significance, it's speaking out of turn. They can say they agree with the analysis or they disagree with the analysis, but the issue of significance is with the local planning department.
Okay.
And we're saying that if you follow the process right, they are mandated by those rules to declare it significant.
But you're also saying that ODOT is agreeing with the city and their analysis?
No.
I mean, I think that says that in the staff.
No, I don't think so, because the letter that came back from ODOT said to the city, we have looked at the analysis, the conclusions, and we find no problem with it. In that specific letter, they said to the city, you did not send us all of the appendices and all the data, so they could not do a complete analysis. And they further said in that letter, if you do provide mitigations, we have to provide it. But ODOT was not provided everything to do the kind of analysis that is required to come back and make some of the statements in full. And they, and they conditioned their analysis and their responses.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay.
And thank you very much.
Yep. Dan, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Could you get close to that mic? I just have trouble hearing.
Sure.
There we go, thank you.
My name is Dan Gerges. I live in West Salem, and I'm also a member of the Land Use Group. So this is my first time, so bear with me a little bit, so hopefully we'll get through. I am to, to talk about the condition of River Bend Phase 2 project. We, West Salem Neighborhood Association, asking Salem Planning Commissions to require the project to have open space area and trails and community connection be a condition to have an open space, to be a condition of approval of the project. The applicant has explained this to West Salem Neighborhood Association for the project acceptance. However, it's only enforced as long as the homeowner association or their governor body agreed to continue. Since it was a selling point for West Salem Neighborhood Association's support of this project, we requested there would be a condition within the zoning or project to enforce a provision for trail, community connection, and open space therein. We're asking the City Council buy in and in full support of this condition. For our discussion with Mr. James, architect and project rep, the River Bend Center project has considerable open recreation space plan that the neighborhood is welcome and use and enjoy. The open and recreation space is expected to be maintained by the property owner with HOA fees. There's no guarantee that the open space will continue in existence or continue to be open to the neighborhood residents. That's why we need the support from the City Council and written guarantee from the project to have these conditions, possibly as an easement for future use, because we never know what's going to happen in the future. Again, thank you, thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening. Linda Verley, I live in Ward 8, and I'm also on the Land Use Committee. And I'm here to, to make the point about the SDCs, that the neighbor, the Neighborhood Association felt very strongly about this, that SDCs generated in West Salem should stay in West Salem. I, I think at the heart of it, everybody understands that that's not the way the SDC system, the methodology works. However, what the Planning Commission rebutted with is that only the City Council has the authority to allocate SDC funds. And, and I was thinking about that mitigation question too. How, you know, how do, how would you mitigate for that additional traffic? And so one of the ways, that's actually in the system development charge methodology, is a traffic signal at Brush College and Wallace Road, that intersection. And traffic not only is abundant on Wallace Road, but it moves really fast. And a traffic signal has the ability to regulate traffic flow so that you're not going really fast until you get to Orchard Heights Road, when you have to sit in traffic that's gridlocked for blocks. And the fact that Wallace Road is a state highway is not unique. We have Commercial Street, Mission Street, and Portland Road that are all state highways, and the way they accommodate a high volume of traffic is with traffic signals. In West Salem, we're likely to see more development along Wallace Road before there can be physical changes to add capacity. A signal at the Brush College-Wallace Road intersection would not reduce the traffic volume, but it would modify the impact, and it would help people get along that roadway a little more smoothly. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Linda. Any questions? Counselor Lewis?
Just one, Linda, if I could. Your suggestion of a stoplight at Wallace and Brush College.
Brush College.
That would, you would be, your comment that that would be paid for by this development?
No. Well, isn't, I think that that traffic signal is already in the, in the SDC list. It's on that 3, they call it a 309 list, right? And so I'm asking that the City Council, who, it's my understanding that you have the authority to do this, to move it into the CIP?
Yeah.
Because it, it doesn't have to be put into the list, it's already on there. And so you could just move that into the current CIP and, and move that project forward. I, I think you have to get ODOT's approval for that, I think. So, you know, there's a process there, so it couldn't happen tomorrow. But, and I don't think the development would have to pay for it. Now, I, I don't know process that well, so I'm not the person to ask about that. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. James Clark?
I'm going to have to ask how to close this escape. Hi, I'm James Clark. This is my first time here tonight.
James, could you pull that mic up and talk into it?
Sorry, I'm used to talking without a mic in a big room.
Yeah.
I'm James Clark. This is my first time here tonight, so please bear with me, and thank you. I see that I chose the correct theme for my slides because it matches the Tree City right there. I think I have something really easy to talk about tonight. I'm talking about trails and community areas and a community center. And this is in regard to the, to the River Bend project. Like it was referred to earlier, we are appealing that decision. And we're appealing it based on the spirit of a meeting we had with the developer, Mr. James, at our West Salem Neighborhood Association meeting in August. The developer came in and enjoyed the goodwill and spirit of the room, where we talked about the natural open spaces with the tree, like you see there, because we are the Tree City. We talked about connecting park, parkways to the community center, redeveloping an old barn. And so it sounded really good, and I would say it was almost unanimous at the time. So we are asking that that spirit be encapsulated actually in the plan to make it, to make the word match the paper. So we're including a condition for approval, requiring the developer to stay true to their word, and this condition would recapitulate the spirit in detail between the developer and the Association of Neighbors. So we are here today to affirm that our plea, that we stand together in contract as well as word, because unfortunately, we have all experienced bad players. They say one thing and they do another, and we cannot ensure it for future generations unless it's actually in the contract. And as Mr. James said earlier, he builds beautiful properties and does beautiful work. Let's just put it in the contract, so we have it there, and our neighbors can enjoy this. The fundamental connection I always make, because I'm in healthcare, is that we're also talking about healthcare. So land use is a healthcare decision. What we do today will impact tomorrow. There'll be significant community impact from the 84 proposed units and the accompanying residents. So please give the new residents and our current members the benefit of an outdoor space to play and come together in the community. We do not want to be victims of not putting into contract what we were promised. The stakes are too high. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? Right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the City Council. I'm EM Easterly, Ward 8. I'm here this evening and, in a way, asking something very specific of you, the council. As a policy body, you rely upon staff interpretations and staff recommendations. As a quasi-judicial body reviewing a Salem land use decision, you are charged with determining whether the decision being appealed means all legal obligations. To make that determination, I ask that you carefully and independently review all submissions. May it please the court. My oral testimony will be brief because both my written submission to the Planning Commission, which raised the unacknowledged Luba decisions, and the document submitted via email last week offer details that cannot be presented in three minutes. The two-phase River Bend project exemplifies city staff's unwillingness to address the cumulative impact of development on West Salem transportation facilities. While I support, and Mr. James was correct, the River Bend project, I am appealing the Planning Commission approval of that project for the five topical challenges submitted in my written testimony. Tonight, I ask that the council return, the Planning Commission, return the. Tonight, I ask that the council return the planning commission decision to staff, again repeating what Mr. Anderson asked. My reasons are three. To actually review the analysis and conclusions tendered in the Phase Two TIA in light of the Salem Transportation System Plan. We haven't talked about that. Two, to perform the mitigation analysis required on 660-1260 and obtain ODOT approval of the proposed mitigation. And three, to allow the applicant an opportunity to update and correct the traffic model assumptions and conclusions that staff has inappropriately affirmed.
You're done?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
So I was curious. I saw Mr. Fricki's response to your letter. I saw your response back, and I wasn't sure. I just wanted to hear you kind of sum that up.
I would be happy to. Thank you for acknowledging that my queries to Mr. Fricki have yet to be answered. He offered conclusions. He suggested that analysis took place. I said, would you please provide it? I would be more than willing to listen and hear, but as Mr. Anderson said, to suggest that only 16 trips out of this project arrive at Wallace Road and Glen Creek is beyond absurdity from my perspective.
He seems satisfied. I'm just curious, because he represents ODOT on this.
I appreciate it if you read my dialogue or my written response on the email. He felt fairly comfortable. And all I said, please, Mr. Fricki, provide me the analysis that you said you or your staff provided, I would turn to Mr. Nice here and say, give me a chance. I'd like to support this project, but I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Pamela, do you want to come up and answer questions in case there are any? So does anyone have any questions? Tony, clarify this traffic thing for us, would you? Tell us what's going on here. Why is this? It looked like everybody seemed to agree, and now there's fairly substantial disagreement. What's going on?
So many things. Good evening, council. Tony Martin.
I can tell, listening to a history of the Third Bridge, there's more going on here than meets the eye, apparently.
Tony Martin is the City Traffic Engineer. I've been, just from my background, I've been with the city almost 15 years doing traffic analysis and things like that. Prior to that, I worked for ODOT for 12 and 1/2 years doing traffic analysis and TPR analysis, so I'm very familiar. So one of the things that I heard is that we didn't follow the process. Well, we actually did. The process is to do the traffic analysis that was done by green light engineering. And in that, they showed what the development, what the intersections would operate in 2035 under existing conditions, and then what they would be with their development. And it shows there's an increase of 0.01 in the volume to capacity ratio. And by the Oregon Highway Plan rules, which is what Mr. Fricki referred to, and that's the guiding document, because this is state highway, if the increase in the volume to capacity ratio is less than 0.03, which 0.01 is, they determine it's not significant. Now, that doesn't mean there's not an impact. There will be more traffic, and that's a given. So, you know, we believe we have followed the process. ODOT has reviewed all of the documents with all of the appendices. They wouldn't have made the statements without them. I've reviewed the documents with all the appendices. And there's a second analysis that was done. There was the first one, like Mr. Nice said. ODOT and the city reviewed it. We gave comments back, and they revised their analysis, but it didn't change the conclusions.
On the impacts mitigation proposals, Linda Beerly, I thought, had an interesting proposal, putting a light at Brush College to kind of help regulate traffic from this area through the traffic that builds up on Wallace. What do you think of that proposal as an add-on?
Well, the traffic signal at Brush College and Wallace Road, it is an ODOT facility. We need ODOT approval. We'd have to find funding, all those kinds of things. It would also need to meet signal warrants. There's warrants that have to be met before we put in a traffic signal. A traffic signal at that location is not going to really affect the flow other than it will create platoons. A red light will come on, and then there'll be a platoon of cars, but it's not going to decrease the number of vehicles going through Wallace Road and Orchard Heights.
But do you know if the warrants are there for this light? Do you know what's?
A warrant analysis wasn't done for this proposal because...
But that would be something that could be done.
It could be done. Yeah, it wasn't done because this intersection, in its unsignalized form, was operating below the threshold for mobility standards.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Let's talk, Mr. Martin, about option C. There's been some discussion that the staff, either city staff or ODOT staff, did not follow option C. And I think what you're saying by implication is you didn't have to follow option C because you didn't rise to the level of needing to do the analysis under option C?
Well, the... So the ODOT standard, and it was brought up there, that this is over 1,000 trips, so it's not considered a small. So it has to go through an analysis. It goes through a process. Well, the process is to do the traffic analysis to determine whether it's a significant effect. So that's what the point was. The other options are, if it's below the operating standard, there's no impact. There's no mitigation required.
So option C was if there is a significant effect, and what you're saying is ODOT says to you, there is not a significant effect because we're .001, not .003 or more.
Correct. In the operating...
Whatever.
Yeah. In the operating standard, when an intersection is already operating above the standard, which, you know, the standard is 0.95, and we're at a 1.2 something, the operating standard becomes what it is, what we would expect it to be in 2035 without the change. We cannot possibly mitigate to .09, .095.
Got it. So you have a different baseline, is what you're saying?
Yes, because we're already above the threshold.
So with respect to mitigation, and Mr. Anderson described some of the potential mitigations that we've discussed, but I'm just guessing here that if the mitigation would have to be approved by ODOT, they don't really care, or they say there doesn't need to be any mitigation because of the issues we've already just talked about.
I would say that's, you know, the trip cap certainly is a mitigation, and the applicant said they'd accept that, and we can add that in. The mitigation to lower the volume to capacity ratio at an intersection generally takes the addition of lanes. That could be a right turn lane, could be an additional left turn lane. On Wallace Road, it's probably a through lane. We can't stretch the road.
Yes.
Now, this may be for Ms. Cole and not for you, but as I look at our decision today, what we are deciding is merely, do we change the zone? And if we change the zone, then the developer is going to have to submit their final plans to the planning, and the planning department's going to have to say, we need a site review, we need some conditional use permits, we need some other thing to make this development a reality.
Yes.
Okay.
Today, it's just the comprehensive plan change, end zone change, site plan review.
And so part of those additional things, and now I'm sort of looking at Director Fernandez here, too, part of them might be that the developer needs to use the SDC charges, if it's on the 309 list and can get moved up or moved around. It could be that a traffic light would have to go in at the intersection we're talking about.
No. The traffic impact analysis is done now. I do not believe there'd be another traffic impact analysis as part of site plan review, but I'm looking at my expert to confirm that that's the case.
I would not believe so.
Okay, okay. So what we're saying is that the traffic analysis shows that even with some sort of site review or submission of the actual plans, you've already done the traffic analysis, so the potential for a stoplight or someplace else, some other traffic mitigation is really not there unless all of a sudden the traffic counts change or your traffic analysis changes.
If they significantly changed what they had submitted as part of their traffic impact analysis.
And I'm a little confused about the trip cap. I mean, I think I can understand what it is just logically, but how do you support that? Do you put out traffic counters in the subdivision, or, you know, what happens? And then what do you do if they go over the trip cap?
Well, it would be based on their building size, the number of units. So when they come in for site plan review, they submit a trip generation estimate. It comes across my desk. I fill it out using the trip generation manual that Pamela was talking about, and it says each apartment generates X number of trips, each square footage of retail generates X number of trips, and we ensure that it's below that. If it's over that, then we have a discussion with the applicant and say, you're going to have to change your site plan.
Okay.
Final question, I think, for now. So, and this, I think, is for Pamela. I mean, we could potentially approve this with the amendment to include a trip cap in the zone change? Or would we approve the trip cap in the site review when that comes up?
I would do it now.
Okay.
And I'll have Mr. Martin tell you what the appropriate number should be.
Yes.
Can I share the number? It's in their analysis, and we apologize that we didn't catch it, but we were busy working on the, making sure that it complied with the TPR. But the number would be 2,226 average daily trips.
26?
2226.
Counselor Kay, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm understanding also, Mr. Martin. Two things, I guess, maybe for Pamela, too. For land use only dealing with zone changes, do we typically do a transportation impact analysis or require that for a zone change? Like, if we were doing some other type of zone change affecting a property, do we require a TIA?
It really depends on how big it is and what they're... A lot of times, we'll have a residential, a single-family residence that wants to go to commercial office. We probably aren't going to require a full-blown TIA.
Okay.
It really depends on the scale and the roadway system around it.
Okay. So it's not just a cut and dry?
No.
It really depends. And is that based on what the applicant's saying they want to do in the future, also, I'm guessing?
Well, and that has a lot of bearing on it, because if they come in with, I want to do commercial, we're going to have them look at a reasonable worst case in the commercial development, which could be a fast food restaurant, gas station, and have really high impacts. If they know what they're going to do, and that's what they want to do, that's where we can apply the trip cap and say, this is the way to protect the transportation system by limiting the development.
Okay. Thank you. That makes sense. So I'm looking at the letter from ODOT dated February 13th of this year, and it says that they are addressing traffic impacts due to a comprehensive plan amendment, zone change in development of a shopping center, and they describe what that is. So this memo from ODOT is addressing not only the comp plan amendment, but the zone change and potentially the development, future tents, whatever that might look like. And to your point you said earlier, we probably wouldn't require another TIA since they already did one.
Typically not.
Okay. So, and then I'm looking at the correspondence that we received this evening between Mr. Fricki and Mr. Easterly, and Mr. Fricki says in there, Fricki, sorry.
It's okay. He's been called worse.
He probably's been called that a lot. He says in here that ODOT is saying, while a minimal degradation in operations at two Wallace Road intersections, they'll not have a significant impact on ODOT facilities. And then he goes on to say that there is a net increase in more than 1,000 trips does not constitute an automatic determination that the increase is significant. And then he goes on to say that there's other factors that go into determining significance. So the flow chart that, I've lost it now, Mr. Anderson was proposing, doesn't sound like it's really that black and white. It's not just trips over 1,000 automatically, you know, yes, no. It depends on some other things as well.
Correct.
And that's how ODOT arrived at their determination for their .01 standard or number compared to their .03 standard for saying it's significant.
So in the Oregon Highway Plan is where that number comes from. And those things that Mr. Anderson spoke about in his flow chart, what the Highway Plan says is, these are the times, if you're under this amount, it's automatically not significant, and you don't need to do an analysis. If it's over 1,000 trips, it could be significant, and so you have to go through a process. And that's what this process was, going through the traffic analysis, looking out to 2035, comparing what could be built under existing zoning and what's proposed, and looking at that net difference.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm understanding that correctly as well. Thanks.
Okay. Any further questions? Anyone? All righty. Oh, Counselor Lewis.
I'm not sure who wants to take this one, but it's been mentioned several times, and I'll read from a memo that was included in the planning commission meeting, suggesting that no new development be allowed in West Salem, only city council, until the transportation system is fixed, would be a moratorium on development. Only city council can enact a moratorium, but it must be done consistent with Oregon State Law, ORS 197.505. That got my interest a lot. I'd like to, I guess, hear examples of...
Are you proposing a moratorium then over there, Counselor?
No. Where would the city have the right to impose a moratorium?
Well, that's kind of academic unless someone wants to include that in...
Well, I can guarantee you that folks in West Salem want a moratorium because of the traffic issue.
So there is a process outlined in state law in 197. I think 520 also has the criteria for a moratorium, so 197, 520. And there's a process that outlines what criteria, what findings the city would need to make in order to declare a moratorium. I guess I would caution that, I think, given, well, so it set out, there is a process by which a city can establish a moratorium. It's based on the lack of public facilities or sufficient public facilities. So, and there are some stringent findings that the city council would have to make after a public hearing and a public process to determine that a moratorium is appropriate. So I don't know if that specifically addresses your question or not.
Well, it kind of implies that we may not be there now, but we might be getting there.
I don't know that there's been any analysis to determine if a moratorium, if where we are in terms of that process. I'm not aware of any by staff or anyone else.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Not sure who to direct this to either, but can staff condition approval on the trails and the access for the general public into this development?
We could, but I agree with the planning commission's findings that that would be a taking.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One more comment. When I gave the number for the trip cap, I was looking at the original study, not the updated one.
Okay.
So the new number is 2,085. My apologies.
Okay, anyone else? Great. Thank you very much. Now the applicant can rebut. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel I'm playing attorney here. We heard from Mr. Anderson and Mr. Easterly, and I think there was a more traffic technical issues, or I'm going to let our traffic engineer consultant respond to those. We heard from Mr. Clark... We heard from Mr. Clark and Mr. Gorges about their concerns about the pedestrian walkways that we show on our site plan and the open space. We show more open space than is required, that that be deeded or protected forever. The staff have said that that would be a taking, and, but let me explain the process. Pamela touched on it. At this stage, the planning staff have kind of looked over the site plan and assured that the walkways are shown, the open space is shown on the map. In a few weeks or a couple of months from now, as soon as this is approved, it'll go to site plan review. Very detailed site plan by the civil engineer is reviewed then by the staff to make sure those walkways and that open space is of the right size and the right location, and that is, starts to be set in stone then. And then the third step is when the applicant comes in with construction drawings for the site construction, then that is where the building permit is issued, and that further forms up, and the thing is then built in, set in concrete. So it's there with ADA compliant walkways. So Linda, barely her idea about using the SDCs, if we're paying these couple of million dollars in SDCs, then maybe there's a method to fund the Brush College light at some point in the CIP, but that's up to you. But I think we're providing, you know, the money into the fund, and then it's to your wisdom, you can decide when and where to spend the money. The, I think the overall solution to this is what I touched on earlier, the various mitigation methods that are being discussed, your task force on congestion, the future marine drive, the Center Street bridge improvements, all those types of things will help the situation on Wallace Road. But we are just such a minor impact, and the state is saying that it's perfectly acceptable. So I'm going to let Mr. Nice maybe address Mr. Anderson and Mr. Easterly's detailed technical concerns.
We're going to let the, we're going to get the five minutes done, and then we can ask questions of either one.
Hello, Rick Nice with Green Light Engineering again. I wanted to hearken back to the ODOT email. ODOT has time and time again established that there is no significant effect caused by this project. And just kind of getting back to the trip discrepancy that, I don't recall if it was Mr. Anderson or Mr. Easterly brought up, when we're looking at a transportation planning rule analysis, we're not looking at the full impacts of a conceptual future development. We're looking at the difference between the existing zoning and the proposed zoning. So we haven't yet looked at all of the proposed trips from a future development. We do fully expect to do a traffic study as part of a future site plan review. So at that point, that's when we would look at all of the impact of all of the trips generated by the proposed development. As Mr. Martin mentioned, our impact at the Glen Creek intersection, it's a V over C ratio going up from 1.11 to 1.12 in the weekday PM peak hour. Again, ODOT has determined that is not a significant effect on that intersection. And I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, let me understand again, that we will hear if there are traffic, a warranted traffic impact analysis, we will hear more on traffic impact as this project progresses through the site plan process, is that correct?
That's our, that's what we understand, and that's our plan, is to provide a future site plan review, traffic analysis. That's separate from...
One or two, depending, how many phases you have, three or four? What have you got?
It depends on how the phasing would come in.
Yeah.
I haven't heard of a particular phasing at this time.
Okay.
With Riverbend Phase 1, we combined the TPR and the site plan review analysis together.
Okay.
For this project, we separated them out. So there is a future traffic analysis coming.
Okay, okay. Counselor Lewis?
These are, I think, for Mr. James. The, Pamela has suggested to the council that if we were going to condition this on a trip cap, that we should do it tonight. And I believe I heard you say that a trip cap is okay with you.
Yes, it's okay with us.
Okay. And then my last question, believe it or not, what happened to the trailer? When I, I mean, the tractor? I used to walk around that property.
Oh, the tractor?
Fifteen years, and I called it the tractor field. What happened to the tractor? It'd be a great thing to have.
Maybe the owner took it.
The owner took it.
Because, you know, when you buy a piece of property, you don't get to keep the fixtures, unfortunately, so...
That tractor had sat there and didn't move for 15 years. Yeah.
I know. It wasn't us. We'd like to have it.
Yeah.
So any other questions?
Okay. No, I guess not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Not the applicant, the rebuttal?
No. I don't, the applicant just had his rebuttal.
No.
No. It's over. Thank you. You did a good job. Counselor Lewis, where do you want to take us here?
Well, I can't tell you that, but I'm going to move staff recommendation with the additional third condition that a trip cap be imposed.
Do you want to give a specific, we had a number.
Whatever the number is.
2085.
2085.
Second?
Second by point. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ten years on the Planning Commission, five years on the Salem City Council, this is quite frankly, one of the most justifiable applications that I've seen. It really is good. On the other hand, I represent a ward that you don't have to look any further than the results of the city's survey to see how upset the folks in West Salem are. I can't not support the application because it is justifiable and it needs to be approved. But I share the sentiment of the folks in West Salem that something needs to be done about the transportation facilities that are not present in West Salem.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move to our next public hearing. Open public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding fiscal year 2020 supplemental budget one for additional expense in the trust and agency unanticipated fund budget. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes.
I have no one, I'll say, oh, I got a staff report.
With perhaps Bob Self, I can provide a very brief staff report. The action before you this evening is to pass through to the Rotary Club of Salem a $1 million state grant for the Jerry Frank Rotary Pavilion. We typically amend the budget, city budget, toward the end of the fiscal year. The Rotary Club, as you might expect, is anxious to have the money that they work so hard to receive from the state legislature, and to start earning interest for their project, and most importantly, demonstrate with proof to potential donors and foundations that the project has the state's significant financial support. So your action tonight is required under our budget law and policies, and one reason why we continue to receive certificates of excellence is we do follow the rules, and the rule requires a public hearing. And we would recommend approval of the supplemental budget to allow us to legally transfer $1 million in state funds to the Rotary Club of Salem.
Thank you very much. We have, we have no one from the public signed up. Any questions?
No.
Okay, Counselor Hoy.
I move staff recommendation.
I close the public hearing, then let you.
I again move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Kayser. Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, special orders of business, 3.2A, Counselor Leon.
Just wanted to make sure I'm saying this correctly. I would have to say I move staff recommendation.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Is that where you're going?
You're going to second that?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I had a few questions specifically about this, and I'm not sure who on staff would be able to answer this.
Well, once you ask the questions, then we'll make sure the proper staff person is able to answer that.
So I'm referring specifically to page three of eight. One of my questions has to do with how the, there's five benefits that the staff had determined that were met, and my question is, is there like a ranking in terms of which of those total 19 benefits are better than the other? Or is it just in general, as long as they meet all those main requirements under the ORS, as long as it's one or more design, that it will be approved moving forward?
Clint Dameron from Urban Development can answer that question.
Good evening, Clint Dameron, Department of Development Department, and I administer the Mootip. To answer your question, no, they're not ranked high to low, most impact to least impact. It's, the requirement is that they do meet one of the 19, and this project, as you've mentioned, meets five of the 19.
It was five. The applicant identified six, but it was five that the staff found.
Correct.
So my question about, so on page five, one of the public benefits that were addressed was a common meeting room, and my question about is being open to the general public is, do you know if there's going to be a charge for that? Or was that, that was asked earlier.
Yes, early in the meeting, the owner did identify it would be available to the public at no charge.
Okay. The other question I had specifically was, parking is located within the structure?
He, there is 17 spaces available
Okay.
in the structure. The owner also owns a very large parking lot right across Jamaica Street with 40 spaces, which will be parking available to the residents, but it will not be, the tax will not be abated, as that is not germane to the abatement program, as it's not a true residential use.
Okay. Another concern I have, and this is more of a longstanding conversation that several city councilors, I hope, have that same sentiment, is that while we are seeing an increase in the number of units that are being built downtown, they are all, for the most part, being offered at market rate. And my concern is whether or not, under the public benefits not addressed, the first one, unit sale prices at a mixed income, is that something for consideration for other opportunities? Because, I mean, we're seeing an increase in demand of needing to have more housing, but we also need to have more mixed income be an option for the community.
That would get to the bones of the program. In the last several years, the spin, if you will, of the developments that took advantage of the program were based on a wide variety of prices based on unit size. While they were all market rate, they were not affordable in the HUD sense, but with different levels of square footage, levels of size, levels of bedrooms, they spanned a range of market rent.
We are also looking at different programs to be able to incentivize affordable housing outside of our urban renewal areas.
Yeah? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dameron. I have a question about the program, not the specific project, but I understand it's been around for 40-some years. We've approved seven over the course of those years, seven projects, or this is the seventh project, perhaps. And I'm curious, why so few? And the other question I have is around the criteria that Counselor Leon referenced. We, I understand you only have to have one of the 18. Is that our rule, or is that a law, a state law, or whose rule is that?
That is an ORS.
That is.
And the city's program basically, almost exactly mirrors the state ORS.
Thank you. And can you speak to the, why we may have only done six or seven in 40 years?
The first one that was done in my tenure, which had been probably 20 years before that, was the South Block Apartments. I can't speak to exactly why nobody took advantage of it. It could have been just lack of demand or developer will to develop apartments in the core area. As you've seen, the core area is basically a broad definition of downtown, and my guess was there's just no demand for that type of development in Salem up until that point.
Counselor Anderson.
I have some questions about Mootip, and I don't mean questions that you can answer. I mean just more rhetorical questions from what I've seen of that historically in other cities, that Mootip ends up at the tip of the, the top tip of the housing, and so developers are in effect increasing their profits because we're giving them these exemptions, and then they sell to top-end units, which we heard today, it was not just top-end units, it was the top end of the top end that Mr. Park was proposing. So in general, I just have unease about Mootip. Having said that, I know, and that's why I discussed with Mr. Park, I know that we have several incentive programs, both through the Urban Development Department and also through the Salem Housing Authority, and apparently, Mr. Park was not aware of any of those. So my question is, this far into the project, should not staff have told him that, hey, there's some other ways you might be able to still make your profit, rather than coming in and getting a tax exemption and building high-end units?
Mr. Park did come in for his pre-application conference. He's relatively new to the Salem development scene. This is his largest project in town. He was just made aware of the program, I believe through a newspaper article. So I sat down and explained that to him, and I did note, his property is outside the riverfront downtown urban renewal area, so there is no incentive
Okay.
on the urban renewal side. He could take advantage of...
The SHA authority.
SHA stuff as well.
And...
I don't know if that's his business model. He mentioned he did have some projects.
Did, so I understand why the urban development now could, I thought it was in the area, looking at the property, because it's just inside the downtown zoning, but did he know about SHA until tonight?
I couldn't answer that.
Well, did you tell him?
I did mention, there's other incentives.
Specifically, the SHA program?
Yes.
Okay. So then, following up on that, if we designate, if we go ahead and approve this Mootip, does that mean he can just go through and develop the way he wants to develop? Or will there still be an opportunity for him and Nicole Oots to sit down, and she could say, here's the tax incentives we can give you? Or is the whole thing lost because he's already got the Mootip?
I wouldn't be able to, he's very far down the design process.
Yeah.
I believe he's already in the building permit, so I don't know that at this point...
So it would not happen.
We can certainly make an introduction tomorrow, and...
Yeah, well, I would, if this passes, I would appreciate it if you do. And I have to point out that, you know, we approved the Mootip for the Coes development, and I was in favor of that, and there were some other situations going on there, in that it was a larger unit, it was right downtown in the urban development area. We had some differences, and then we only approved like 16 or 17 parking spaces for 83 or 106 units, I forget which it was. You know, so that achieves some other goals of getting people downtown without necessarily increasing the need for additional dead space parking. But I don't see that this particular program satisfies any of those criteria that made me say I want to vote for the Coes property, which is right downtown. So that's more of a comment than a question, but I will say... a comment than a question. But I will say, I'd love to hear some more discussion from council, because I'm not really sure how I'm gonna vote on this.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, are we in deliberations? Are we still in questions, or both?
Yeah, we got a motion, so
I guess my thinking on this is, we have a set of criteria. They met five, maybe six of those, which is more than...which is more than I think others have. And I have a little bit of unease about this as well, but I do agree that we do need all levels of housing available, although certainly, this is our least need, I would say. I...we have other things that are pressing, but we're not the developer, and this is what he's interested in. And it's a program that's longstanding that meets the criteria, so that's where I'm at.
Are you all reasonably familiar with which building this is? That's a tall building on 13th Street, half a block from Safeway, across from another two...two or three apartment complexes. Yeah. Okay. Which is...have mixed rent amounts, and that's a fairly complicated neighborhood.
Yeah. I can agree that it is, and I also, you know, Mr. Hoy makes very good points, and sitting here as a lawyer saying, that's what the statute says, and we meet criteria. So, you know, my concerns are just overall, generally, I don't want to see us go down to end up having downtown be the Pearl District. And if we keep
Yeah.
approving these sort of high ends, that's what it's gonna be.
One thing I'd suggest is, we could really talk this one through in our policy development period, really take a close look at Mootip, maybe alert staff that we'd like to come deeper into some of these incentives and what the outcome expectation looked like in line with statute. I mean, kind of get us oriented on this thing, and give us a better shot at discussion.
I would agree with that. I'd be interested in some sort of staff report on this, the overall trends of where we're going and what is available to us.
Reach meeting with Sean O'Day. Be sure to bring it up with him, that we'd like to kind of look at some of this stuff. I'll help bring it into the fore. All right. Oh, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, one comment, and I do agree with the sentiment I'm hearing from the council. You know, it's only been a few years that we've been successful in getting any kind of development in downtown, and it is now at the higher end. I would agree that this is something now we need to relook at as far as the criteria, the regulations. But I am more in favor of supporting the lower-income housing now than just any housing.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as I came on council, it was our goal to actually get 100 units of housing in downtown.
Any housing.
And we far surpassed that.
Yeah.
But it was through different kinds of incentives, and so we need to somehow incentivize more affordable housing in the downtown area. And so I look forward to having that as part of our policy pieces. But this meets all the criteria, and hence, I'll be voting in support.
Great.
And I would like to just add that a lack of a counselor's notes does not decrease the amount of comments and questioning.
You don't know how many notes I had.
But you remembered them very well. Yes. Counselor Kazer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Hoy and Lewis, and just that we have standards, guidelines, and this is more, in my view of things, a bit more black and white than a legislative policy-type action. And we have to...we can't just change our minds in the middle of things when something's written down. It doesn't work like that. I think people would be pretty upset if we decided not to follow our own standards for this. The other thing I guess I would point out is, you know, downtown, there are some high-end developments. There's quite a few high-end developments in every other part of Salem as well. I live in probably one of the most affordable neighborhoods in the city, because it's old housing stock, and a lot of people don't want to live in houses constructed before 1900 or thereafter. So I think we have to keep that in mind as well. Downtown is not just condos and, you know, very wealthy people living there. We have very middle-income, low-income individuals also there in Ward 1. So
That's right.
I wanted to point that out.
Lucky there's people like you and me, eh?
[laughing]
Keeps us in. Well, and it is a really nice mixed-use area, mixed-cost area. It really is...and it's got a grocery store, and you can get downtown quickly. It's...there's bus service. So anyone else want to take a run at this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Counselor Hoy, 3.3B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second by Nanki.
So this is one I polled, because I had several concerns. I just felt like the issues that the mayor and the council brought forward several months ago, just, we didn't quite get there in this staff report. I did have a call today, however, with Ms. Anderson Ogilvy and Ms. Kim, and we...they were able to explain the...some of the reasons behind that. And I think that they took the staff report, they took the recommendation as far as they could, given the current state of the law. And the conversation that we had centered around perhaps proposing legislation, that we could refer to our legislative committee, that we could propose for the upcoming session, to actually address this in a meaningful way. And so I'm hoping that they're prepared to speak to that a little bit tonight, because that's really where I'm hoping we'll head with this. Because I agree with, and I'm sorry, I don't recall her name, but the person who spoke at the beginning of our meeting, the member of the public...I'm sorry?
Linda Thompson.
Linda Thompson, thank you. I tend to agree with her sentiment, and we need to make some significant changes. I just don't think we have the capacity to do that, given the current state of the law. And I think we should advocate to our partners in the legislature to fix that.
I join you in that. Counselor Hoy, I have exchanged emails with Ms. Thompson, and was very interested in where we could go with this, and was disappointed that we couldn't go any further than this report, understanding you need to have at least some level of state law. I would be very interested too, though, in other cities that have dealt with this problem. This is, I think, a really difficult problem. We're talking about a very affordable housing here in these mobile home parks, ones that become attractive for purchase, often by out-of-state developers, because they can quickly subdivide them, they're readily available for other kinds of housing. And you can't, as an owner, as I understand it, you really just pretty much have to walk away from any equity you've got, because there's no place to take your mobile home. And it's...I think it's just one of those situations absolutely rife with injustice. And I think that's what we're seeing here, and I think it troubles all of us when you see it. And I understand private property and all that, but I see here a conflict between one person's private property, another person's private property, and the reality of finding housing that's affordable in a city like Salem right now. So I hope we can move forward on this, and if we need legislation to have specific recommendation to take in February, but also, if there is a way to look at some of these other communities that Ms. Thompson mentioned, I think it would be really helpful to have an understanding. How did Bend, or Vancouver, or whomever, think they could do this? What made them think this was possible, so that we can get some sort of control on it? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with your sentiments on that. And I think one of the larger concerns is, with this kind of a configuration of a park, it's more of a partnership of a landowner and a dwelling unit owner as well. They came together, and the only person who is protected is the property owner
Yep.
by state law. But that being said, for us to just say, yeah, we're gonna dump it into the...our Salem basket, the people out there who are impacted by this, like, it could be a little piece in here, we may not get to it at all. Yeah, maybe we'll look at it as part of that program. I would like to see some mechanism to have it still broken out to some extent, so people can be made aware of things that are happening with that. And I do agree that we should look at it from a legislative perspective, and that staff should actually look further than Portland and Bend, and throw out this all, hey, anybody done us something?
Yeah.
And you get two cities. That we should actually be doing a little more research.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out two things that I learned in my early Saturday morning email exchanges with Ms. Kim this weekend. Two things. As you know, in Ward 6, we have a number of mobile home parks, or things that I perceived as mobile home parks, but they have gone through a land use process and have been subdivided, and now several of them are actually individual...individual properties, although there are some that are not still. So I think it's important for council to be aware of that, and so when you're looking at these, everything that looks, you might think is a mobile home park, isn't necessarily a mobile home park. So it's important to take a little deeper look at that. And the other thing is, I wanted to mention, is I found at least one mobile home park in my ward that was not on the state inventory, so I've asked staff to take another look at that, because I'm concerned, are there others? So I want to make sure that we have an accurate picture of what's going on here in the city, and what the potential impact is. And...because, for whatever reason, it wasn't on the state inventory.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, ready?
I'm not sure I'm quite ready to make a motion yet, just because I'm concerned about, do I need to incorporate something about the legislative proposal in my motion, or can we just proceed?
Well, you made the motion, and as we came up on the topic, and I said, so the motion's on the floor, be met, whether or not you want to
Well, right.
Let's check with Lisa and Eunice, see if they heard what we were talking about. Does it make sense what we're saying? Can that be...do you need more authorization or more instructions from us?
Well, to speak clearly for both them, as well
Oh, okay.
the department as a whole.
I'm sorry.
We hear you clearly. It's all right.
[laughing]
We hear you clearly. And I've even communicated to Ms. Thompson as well, that we are seeking some legislative solutions, as well as the state level. So there's actually a few paths that we want to take moving forward, and that is certainly one of the paths that we want to pursue.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So it's heard loud and clear.
I appreciate the legislative direction. I think that's probably the more permanent fix, but that takes so much time and is so iffy in this environment, that I really hope you will look at other cities' ordinances that have at least taken a shot at this, or have created a situation where the kind of problem that Thompsons are facing, or others in this community, we could at least stall the problem somehow, you know? Because it sounds like, if you take action, people at least think twice before they try to start down the road that is happening over there.
Yes, sir. And that sentiment certainly is shared by all of you on council, from what we can hear in this exchange right now. Just to reiterate, for the sake of the work that we put into this report, we looked at this very carefully, and we looked at it with a balanced respect towards vested property rights, as well as the limits of land use law. We can't find anything that is of an immediate fix that we can make through the zoning ordinance right now. And we did, to be fair, we did want to put this as part of a broader conversation with our Salem, because there are pluses and minuses, pros and cons, limits to everything that we want to do in all of these zoning changes that we may make as a result of this issue, or the variety of other issues related to housing and future growth. But Mayor, just to acknowledge what you're saying here, we'll look further at any other types of creative solutions that we can make, whether through zoning or otherwise, and we'll make that a part of...if we find anything that is...that we can see from Vancouver, from Portland, and other areas, we'll try to incorporate this as we can. But as it stands right now, we didn't see anything in our initial analysis.
Yeah.
We'll look further.
Okay, great. Thank you. You can't ask any more than that. Thank you. Any...anything else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Information reports, anybody? Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You did bring your notes.
I did bring my notes. They're right here. So I had another conversation with Ms. Anderson Ogilvy today regarding item number 6C. It's 19-500. It's the East Salem...or East Park Estates, excuse me. And I just wanted to somehow get on the record an email that she sent to me. Is it possible for me to just to submit that as part of the record, or have her read it, or I could read it? I just feel like it was such an...it's around soil contamination, and I just want to make sure that it's on the public record, and I want to figure out how to do that.
So I think you can submit it. I do also think it's part of the record of the hearing from the Planning Commission, so...
It's
But yes, the specific reports, if you want to submit it, I think that's appropriate.
It's an email that clarifies language in the staff report.
Okay.
And I think it's just a really important clarification. So
But it does clarify that language.
It does clarify it quite nicely, yes.
Okay. Because that's...okay. Any...anyone else? All righty, first readings.
Ordinance Bill number 1819, an ordinance relating to amending the Salem Transportation System Plan, a component of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, and amending SRC 64.005. Counselor Osick.
We need a...
First reading.
Yeah, we need a motion. Just a second, don't we?
Oh.
I just want to make sure.
Wow, I'm really getting it myself here. Thank you.
This is...this is in Hoy's district, our ward. So we'll let him make a motion.
We ready?
Yes.
I move we conduct a first reading of ordinance bill number 18-19 to initiate a legislative land use proceeding to amend the Salem Transportation System Plan, to shift the alignment of the proposed Greencrest Street Northeast extension, and refer this matter to Planning Commission for our public hearing.
Second. Second by Osick?
[inaudible]
Okay. Want to discuss it?
No.
No. Okay. Okay, go ahead and vote on that one.
Well
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. I forgot my notes on today. Okay.
Okay, ordinance bill number 1919, an ordinance vacating a portion of Dogwood Drive south.
Okay. You can do it?
Yep.
Okay.
I move staff recommendation.
Excellent work.
Thank you. I couldn't find it.
Okay. Who seconded? Kazer. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill number 1519, an ordinance relating to land use, amending the Salem zoning map for a portion of land located within the Oregon State Hospital Historic District, and amending SRC 230.058, 230.064, and 230.200.
Counselor Kazer, you want to make a motion? You just had that look.
It's not in my ward, but
That's awfully close.
It's close to my heart.
It is.
I reluctantly move staff recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Yeah.
Is it okay?
It's...the buildings are gone.
Yeah.
The Historic District still exists
Okay.
with the remaining buildings that have historic integrity, so there you go.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, ordinance bill number 1119, an ordinance relating to the creation of a tax on wages earned, creating new provisions, SRC 39.001, .010, .020, .030, .040, .050, .060, .70, 70, and 39.080, referring ordinance to the voters.
Counselor Lewis.
I have a couple of questions, if
Well, we're gonna get a motion first. Counselor Hoy.
I move City Council conduct a first reading of ordinance bill 11-19, creating an employee payroll tax, and referring the proposal to voters.
Second.
Now, who seconded?
Um
Your second. Okay, go.
Uh, two questions. One, the discussions with the state of Oregon as far as collecting this employee tax, I'm curious where we are, and if that's been resolved yet.
Those discussions are ongoing, not yet resolved.
Okay. Okay, I must have forgot the second question. Thanks.
I was hoping you were gonna underscore it. This is being referred This is being referred to the voters, in case that wasn't clear. This goes to the voters.
Stand.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
As we know, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, but as the council knows, I think that both these should have been passed by the council, but I'm willing to submit one of them to the voters because of the discussions we've had on council. But I would urge all the city councillors here, if we refer this to the voters, I would hope and expect to see all nine of us out there campaigning fiercely for this to be passed.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to just go on record saying that the city is in dire financial need. This is a reasonable and appropriate way to resolve it, and I very much support it, and I hope the voters will as well.
A question, Counselor. When will the election be? Do you recall?
I believe it's in May.
Okay. At the primary election in May.
Yes.
Public will have a chance to vote on this.
Correct. The public will be able to vote in May.
In May.
In May.
At the primary election.
At the primary election.
Counselor Lewis?
2020. Now, that reminded me of my second question. I noticed in the handout from staff that the vote on the employee tax would be May of 2020, and the collection could start in 2022. And I'm curious why, assuming that we have the state of Oregon to go along with this, why, after the vote, why would it take two years to implement the fee?
Well, I'll let Bob go into detail, Bob Barron, go into detail on that, but it really is connected to your first question, Counselor, and the reason the discussions are ongoing is the Department of Revenue has given us a timeframe that they are working with, working with other collections that they're making, that the Department of Revenue is making on behalf of other jurisdictions and also the state of Oregon. Beyond that, the mechanics of the implementation and the collection, Bob may be able to provide more detail.
Sure. My, my staff and I met with the Department of Revenue, and they indicated a backlog of programs. Our initial estimate would be that the programming would take approximately the same amount of time as it did for the marijuana collections, which was about a year. And although we don't have a final number from them, we're saying the earliest that we could collect would be, it says July 1, 2022, of course, that's fiscal 2023, 2022 to 2023. And that would be our hope. But again, that's somewhat optimistic because there's so many unknowns right now. But that's, that's the earliest we think we could get it done.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions on this one? Counselor Nanki?
No questions. Just, I'm not in support of this measure. I still have a lot of questions. I have an issue with the equity component, where people who don't live here and work here have to pay and they have no voice in a vote. We also have people who live in far south Salem, they drive just over the city limits and work just outside, but we're saying somebody who drives from Portland, buzzes straight off the freeway, goes to work, goes home, has more of an impact, it should be taxed versus this person who lives here and actually uses more of our services. So there's an equitability concern across the spectrum to me. And then the last one really comes down to $9.1 million that we're saying is going to public safety, and I've seen no guarantee that there will be no other shift in public safety dollars, and we're going to follow the same trend we've been, and we're going to bump that up $9.1 million on public safety only, because public safety is not our only general fund service need.
Okay.
And I'm very concerned about that element of it, and how we push that out there and what we actually do, and the public's response to that, as a potential lack of trust.
Certainly be, I'm sure, part of the lively discussion during the election.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay, as Nanki, as he said. Okay, let's, let's take number...
Ordinance Bill Number 1219, an ordinance relating to the creation of an operations fee, amending SRC 70.250, and creating new provisions, SRC 40.001, .005, .010, .015, .020, .025, .030, .035, .040, .045, .050, and .055.
All righty. Counselor Hoy?
I move City Council conduct first reading of ordinance bill number 12-19, creating a city operations fee to fund city services.
Second by Anderson. Counselor Hoy?
I would just like to underscore what I said. On the last vote, the city is in a dire financial situation. I think this is a reasonable way to resolve that. It's, I know that new fees are not popular always, but I also know that cutting vital services is not popular, cutting law enforcement, cutting fire, cutting code enforcement, those are not things that people want to see. They want more services, not less services. So I think this is a good way to get there. I think it's unfortunate that our state property tax system is in the situation it's in, but it is what it is, and I think we owe it to the residents of Salem to resolve it, and this does that.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I've spoken a lot on this in the past, so I'm not really going to talk about it, except to discuss the utility rate relief program that is available here. So if the concern is for low-income people, on fixed incomes, disabled, they will be, if they qualify under the utility rate relief program, and there are certain qualifications that can be easily established, they will also qualify for relief under this operating fee.
Counselor Leo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on Counselor Anderson's point, just want to make sure that people who are here today understand that to apply for the utility rate relief program, it would be through the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. That was included within the, through this report under Attachment 3, in terms of who could qualify for a discount and how to apply for the discount.
Counselor Lewis?
You know, I couldn't agree more with the legitimate need of the city. The funds are needed. And I'm in favor of the fee, actually, of the two. I think the utility fee is the most fair. But I think, especially when you take into consideration the results of the city survey, I don't know if not referring this to the voters is going to help that. In fact, I think it's going to hurt it. We're in a situation where I think it's important for us to explain what we need, but then ask the voters to approve it.
I'm going to just second the comments from Counselor Lewis. I have served, I chaired the revenue task force, served on it, served on the last time we had a revenue task force. In every case, I have felt strongly and continue to believe that if you're going to ask people for additional funds, one of the really polite things to do is actually ask and to make your case, and that means going to the voters. So I believe very strongly these issues should be taken to the voters. I'm very hopeful that the feelings of those who are going to, if you choose to enact it, are correct, and that this doesn't play forward against other actions we may take at the ballot box. I'm just real concerned about that. But I'm really hopeful you're correct, that this is something the public fully understands, they know where the money's going, we can make a clear case for it. I think we could have gone to the voters and done that, but I guess the choice is not to, so, or may not be. I don't know. Counselor Kizer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one likes to raise fees on people. I certainly don't. I do see the needs in our city, though, and I know that if we don't do this, if this, I guess, to go on the record, if this doesn't pass tonight, I will be introducing a motion next council meeting for cuts in services, because that's what has to happen if this doesn't pass. Because that revenue will start being collected the first of the year so that we can use it for the next fiscal year. Because if we don't do that, we will make cuts, and they will have to be to the general fund, and the general fund is made up a majority of public safety. And that's the reality. And I think it's, it can be very difficult for our, our community to really understand that, but that is the truth, and that's how these things work. I also feel like we are in such a bind as a city because we are just, our hands are tied because of state law. And I really wish that our cities could come together to really lobby our legislators at the state level to change those laws so that we do have some control again over our taxes and what we can collect and, and not have arbitrarily set tax rates. I get this question constantly from people. How come, name your city, Eugene, Portland, Woodburn, Hillsborough, how come they have things that Salem doesn't? And I can point to, part of that is because Beaverton has a tax rate that's 50% higher than Salem, because it happened to be what it was on January 1, 1990, whatever it was.
That's right.
It was arbitrarily set by the legislature, and that is not fair. It's not equitable to anybody within the state of Oregon. So if you just happen to have had a high tax rate, you got that benefit. Salem's kind of in the middle. There are cities way worse off than we are. They're, they're very, very low, and those cities are struggling big time. So I hope this is also, though, people will educate themselves that we need reform within the, with that, in the state level so that we can do the job that we need to do, and we have the tools so that we can do it within the city so that we don't have to do things like this to provide the services that our community is asking.
Counselor Narra?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I think that we can do moving forward is make sure that the people understand what exactly our financial posture is. Now, in the past 10 years, Salem has grown a lot, and the city report we have in front of us says it's grown by more than 9%. And I think most people would assume that, well, surely, if the city is growing, I bet our staff are growing too. I bet our number of firefighters are growing, our number of police officers are growing, our number of code enforcement officers are growing. And that is actually not true. The reports we have right in front of us show that we have fewer officers today than we did 10 years ago. It says officers per 1,000 people is 8% less than 10 years ago. And at the same time, we know that crime rates are up. You can look at the tragedies report in the newspaper to know that. And it shows here that crime rates have increased almost 22% during this last 10 years. So I want the people of Salem to think about that. Our city is growing, and you cannot assume that our staffing levels have been keeping pace, because they have not. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I have to comment on Counselor Kizer's comments. If I heard it correctly, if we don't pass this tonight, at our next meeting, there'll be budget cut proposals, and that's the first I've heard of that. I contend that there is time to send this issue to the voters, May of 2020, and to start the collection in a short amount of time that will keep us in compliance with our goals and our financial needs. And to say that if we don't pass it, if this council doesn't pass it tonight, we have to start the cutting process, and I disagree.
Okay. Well, that would have been a great debate in an election day. Go ahead.
It would be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just final comment, and we've all made comments on this before as we just moved up to this point, but we've known about this for a long time, and not sending it to the voters, because now it's an emergency after we've been watching this steady degradation over the last 20 years, really, and we've made dips and starts, but, you know, we, say we've been paralleling the cliff, well, no, we're not then, if we're at this point, that we are contemplating cutting services if this motion doesn't pass, rather than send it out to the voters.
I think it's just trying to clarify what the concern is that Counselor had. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. To me to say, we've known about this for a long time, based the question of why didn't we do something about it back then? So here we are now with nothing done on it, and we've got to make the hard decisions.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. And I will clarify, the reason why I would prepare a motion to, for Counselor Lewis, to your point, is because I don't think we can wait, because we're going to need the money that we save over the next seven months to pay for services in fiscal year 2021. And that's why. I would do that now, knowing that, that we would have a more significant shortfall. It's that, at that point, is now, is just a matter of numbers and making sure that we can sustain some level of services. So I do think we would have to do that pretty soon if we're not able to raise revenue starting January 1.
Okay. Well, we'll find out. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
At, motion passes, six to three? No's Nanki, Bennett, and Lewis. Okay? Very good. I think, if I read this correctly, my notes are correct. We're adjourned.